Good evening. This is the Select Board meeting for Wednesday, February 9th, 2022. This meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. And my name is Katie Conlan. I'm the Chair of the Board. Could we all introduce ourselves, please?
Arthur Doyle, Vice Chair.
Mike Zulus, Secretary.
Melinda Collins, Member.
Richard Wells, Member.
Mike Dennehy, Town Administrator.
Linda Napoli, Administrative Assistant.
And we're also joined by Senator Walter Timmeltie, who's going to be speaking with us in just a few moments. So we will start this evening's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I should mention that the meeting is being recorded by Milton Access Television and also broadcast live. So we'll put up our picture of the flag, and if everyone would please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Before we get to the next item on our agenda, which is a moment of silence for John Cronin, retired town administrator, we want to remember and begin with a moment of silence for former member of this board, Catherine Haynes Dunphy, the first woman to serve on this board elected in 1993, who we understand passed away last night. And what I thought we might do is something similar to what we've done for Mr. Cronin at our next meeting, and hopefully that will be the 15th, which is next Tuesday, to have a specific agenda item by which we could have some words about Catherine Dunphy. But unless anyone would like to say anything tonight, and I'll invite any members of the Board who may wish to say a few words, but we could hold it until next week and just have a moment of silence this evening unless anyone would like to weigh in. And I should note, the town administrator has made arrangements for flags on town properties to be lowered to half staff in memory of Catherine Dunphy. Okay, then why don't we take a moment of silence in memory of Catherine Haynes Dunphy? Thank you all. Okay, so we will add recognition of Catherine Dunphy to our agenda, whether it's the 15th or the 23rd, but hopefully we'll be able to meet on the 15th. And our condolences to the entire Dunphy family. As everyone knows, Dr. Jim Dunphy passed away recently, so this is a time of grief for the family and for the town. We have on our agenda a moment of silence and remembrance of the late John Cronin, retired town administrator. And we're going to put up a photo that Arthur was able to find for us of the Cronin family. And this is an opportunity for our members of the Board to recognize and say a few words about John Cronin, who served for 33 years as town administrator and for whom the Cronin Conference Room at Town Hall is named. Would anyone like to start? I'm happy to turn it over to the Board, and I can speak last. What we're doing, maybe I'll just start by mentioning the various positions in town governments that John Cronin held. He had a lengthy and distinguished service history to Milton. He was a town meeting member, a park commissioner, Conservation Commission member. In his later retirement years, he served on the Board of Directors at Fuller Village and the Wakefield Estates Advisory Board. We know John was an active and committed gardener and was very active with the Massachusetts Cultural Society. But perhaps the way we remember him best is as the former town administrator. From 1968 to 2001, 33 years of service in that position, which we're going to talk about tonight, is not an easy position to serve in, public facing and a lot of different independent boards to work with and members of the public. So those are the positions that John Cronin held during his years of service to Milton Town Government. Would anyone like to open it up with a few words about John?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you. I'm having some technical difficulty with the Zoom, but I'm glad you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
I want to acknowledge John's unique mentorship contribution to countless numbers of people in the town of Milton, both within and without a town government. He was the unique personality. I first met him when I was a young scout, about age 13, and enjoyed a relationship with John and his family for decades. I would just sum up by saying that John Cronin, like so many other people, has left an amazing contribution to the town of Milton. But he's outstanding in that respect, and he's left an indelible mark on the town. I will mention that last night at the meeting of the Conservation Commission, the CONCOM decided that it would like to establish a lasting memorial to John for his contributions to conservation in the town, recognizing him as the father of Milton Conservation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Any other member of the Board? Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Arthur, for that. I think what strikes me most about John's contributions to Milton are how relevant and positive a contributor he continued to be for so long and how his ideas and his commitments will have shaped this town for so long and will continue to shape this town for a long time to come. And on the personal side, John's wife, Marita, reminded me last week, the first time that I met John, and that was when I was first running for town meeting member 10, 12 years ago. And I was standing outside, for a long time outside the Council on Aging with Marita and Dan O'Connor, another longtime town meeting member. And we were holding our signs, and we were out there for hours. And I was going to stay out there as long as Dan and Marita stayed out there. And later in the afternoon, I'd heard about John but didn't know him. John drove up and said hello to Marita, and we hadn't met yet, but I was standing next to him with my sign. And he said, well, he said, since you're out here with Marita, I'll throw you a vote. And so he threw me a vote, apparently, and that was the first time I met him. And John, both John and Marita were very kind and welcoming my wife, Mariani, and I, you know, into their home many years ago when we first became involved in town affairs. And so we're going to miss John and the town. The town will miss him, but the town will still be shaped by John Cronin for a long time to come.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Ms. Collins.
I could echo a lot of what was just said, and especially the mentorship aspect. I'm really grateful for the first time I sat down in John and Marita's home to talk about running for the Select Board. And I got a primer on Milton that I hadn't expected and brought our town alive to me in a new way because the long view was something I didn't have because I didn't grow up here. And my family wasn't from here. So I'm very grateful for that generous spirit and his readiness to always share, his intellect, his experience, and laughter. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to echo the comments of my colleagues. My relationship with John, Mr. Cronin, as I always recall him, is much like Arthur's, it goes back to when I was a Boy Scout as a young kid. Now, John definitely, as his son Jay articulated very eloquently stated at his funeral the other day, is that John knew every inch of the 13 square miles of the town of Milton, from beginning to when. Sometimes I think he was actually in the Suffolk Resolves House when that declaration was signed, but I'm not sure, but it's possible. His spirit probably still lives there today, as it lives in our meeting house tonight. Now, John definitely came from an era where Town Hall was a much different place. If you wanted to be an employee of this town, it didn't matter whether you wanted to be a high school kid cutting grass or you're going in the police department, fire department, the DPW, or to be at the library. You were not hired without first sitting before Mr. Cronin. And sometimes he didn't say anything. Sometimes it was only a look over those glasses. But he was always able to communicate what was his innermost feelings were. For me, I was so privileged to have so many roles with him, just as a union negotiator when I was a young policeman, and John and Michael Hayden from Murphy Hesse to me, Hayden, were tough, tough negotiators. Always, John would come in with his yellow board and his pencil. And if you've ever read John's writing, you can tell it from 100 miles away. It was very unique and distinct, and it's never changed in the 60 years I've known him. But the one thing I really want to talk about John is that myself, like many other young men in Milton, were privileged to be Boy Scouts. And John had an immense love for scouting, more than probably anyone I've ever met. And I think of all the young men from Milton, and many of us, especially Katie, you probably more than anyone on this board, have gone to more Code of Honors and Eagle Scout ceremonies. When I think of all the Eagle Scouts that he influenced, going back to the 1960s, that live today, and how much he realized how important achieving the rank of Eagle Scout was and pushing all three of his boys, radio scouts, John never wavered from that. For me personally, whenever a conversation got difficult, I would either tell a story about either Camp Seer, Adams Pond, which is the big Boy Scout camp of Boston, up in Boston, New Hampshire, which is, I just returned there for the first time in 50 years. And the pictures that I took, I sent to John. That was this past November. A mass of soya on the Cape. All you had to do was tell a story about scouting, and you could change John's mood in a minute. He loved the fact that scouting shaped men. And he never, ever, ever wavered from that, whether it was... If there's one thing, Arthur, you've probably been there, if there's one thing I could say to any, because it's in our town, to any one of us in town is, you've all walked through the Boon Hills. Take a walk through Camp Seer, and one of the things that lives in Camp Seer still today are these Adirondack huts. They are nowhere else but in the northeastern in the Adirondack Mountains of New York, or up in New York where it is. And to sleep in an Adirondack shack is to sleep in an outside, covered, open-faced hut with a fire on the front. And if you wanted to make John smile, tell him you did it in January, February, March, and you could truly make that man stay. But when I think of all the young kids who are men today, who have benefited professionally and personally in their life because of scouting, John Cronin lived it his whole life, and he never, ever wavered from it. So that's a credit to someone I like, anyone I've ever known. So as the song says, "He's all together again, the scouts again in heaven tonight." God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. I'll just add briefly, I knew of the Cronins for a long time, growing up in Milton, through St. Mary's Parish and through town meeting and other town events. But my first real opportunity to work with John came when I was serving with him on the Town Government Study Committee about 11 years ago. And then even more than that, in the following year, on the political campaign that tried to pass the Community Preservation Act and was unsuccessful in 2012. John and I ended up being co-chairs mainly through Tom Hurley's brooding. And it was an opportunity for me to work not only with John but also with Marita. And I really got to know them well during those few months we were working together, meeting weekly, a lot of emails, a lot of phone calls, trying to see what we could do to pass a political campaign. And it was clear to me that both of them wanted to move Milton forward in many ways, and especially on issues that the CPA could ultimately help, open space, affordable housing, historic preservation and recreation. When that campaign did not succeed, everyone who had been involved, just as you would on any campaign that doesn't succeed, was very disappointed and disheartened. And I'm sure John was as well. But John seemed to perceive better and quicker than the rest of us that some groundwork had been laid and that we were going to live to fight another day. And those issues would percolate over time. And as time went on, projects and different educational programs in town and different events in town would bring, and different needs in town would bring the need for greater attention to open space or affordable housing and historic preservation forward. So what I really liked about John was he had a big vision, but he was practical in his approach to moving the needle. He knew that it would take time to see success and progress happen, but he didn't let that change his big vision. He merely took a practical approach to it. And he always was looking to foster what was in the best interest of the town. During the years I've served on this board, and as all of us know, John would often email the Board, the town administrator, with his thoughts on different projects. So even in his retirement, he was following town issues very closely and weighing in. And he would usually offer us a long history of something that usually none of us knew anything about, but John had some good backgrounds that was helpful to the ultimate decision. He would offer suggestions that were substantive and practical. And sometimes he criticized what we were doing, but it was always constructive. He was always looking to move things in the right direction and provide guidance and the experience that comes with a long career in government to the Board and to new members of the Board. So the way I would sum John Cronin up was a man with big vision, focused on the best interest of Milton, moving Milton forward in a progressive, proactive way, but doing so practically. Our condolences to the entire Cronin family. We have a nice picture of John and Marita and their three sons, Jay, Brian and Will. We extend our condolences to the entire family. There was a beautiful tribute to John on Friday evening at the wake and on Saturday at the funeral with a lot of former and current town officials, employees, volunteers, as well as, as Richard mentioned, the Boy Scouts, many of them in uniform, who turned out for the funeral, which was very nice to see. So may John, on behalf of the Board, may John Cronin, a man who was all things Milton, rest in peace, and our condolences to Marita. Thank you all very much. Thank you to M A T V for posting that photo. So we'll move on to item four. We have State Senator Walter Timmeltie with us this evening. Senator Timmeltie is the Chairperson of the Joint Committee on Public Safety and Homeland Security. And he is here along with, I believe it's Major Joseph Bloom, who we can move from attendee to panelist, please, to speak with us about cybersecurity. So Senator Timmeltie, why don't we wait for Major Bloom to come over?
Certainly.
Here we are. Okay. Senator Timmeltie, thank you, and Mr. Major Bloom, thank you for coming in this evening and joining us. And we'll turn the floor over to you. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, very much, and to each and every member of the Board. Mr. Dennehy and Mr. Napoli, thank you very much for this opportunity tonight. And to all the voters and the citizens of the town of Milton, thank you for the privilege of working for you all in the State Senate. One of my roles in the State Senate is to serve as the Chair of the Public Safety and Homeland Security Committee for the State Senate. And within the purview of that committee, there are many elements of our public safety and homeland security infrastructure. But one of the chief ones, if not the chief one, is Massachusetts National Guard. I've had the opportunity to work with, hand in hand with the Adjutant General, General Gary Keefe, who does an excellent job leading the outstanding men and women of the Guard in so many different endeavors. I've had the opportunity to travel with General Keefe to Washington, D.C., to meet with our troops down there, who are protecting our nation's capital, protecting the Vice President's residence and various federal installations. I've also had the privilege of attending the Cyber Yankee Security Conference, which is a cyber warfare exercise that the Mass National Guard hosted this summer at Joint Base Cape Cod with all of the National Guards from around New England, all of the state police agencies from around New England, and several federal law enforcement agencies, as well as National Guard forces from other states in the Union. Quite simply, the Massachusetts National Guard is outstanding at cybersecurity. And tonight, and I thank you, Major Bloom, for being here tonight. We have Major Joseph Bloom, who is a resident of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and a devoted soldier in the Massachusetts National Guard. Major Bloom is outstanding at cybersecurity and cyber warfare and is an absolute expert. What I am doing tonight, twofold. First of all, I would like to formally invite the town of Milton to a forum that I am hosting with General Keefe with the National Guard on March 30th at the Braintree National Guard Armory, which is the only active-duty armory in operation within the 10 towns that I am privileged to represent in the Norfolk, Bristol and Plymouth District. What I am seeking to do with this invitation is, number one, forge a partnership between the town of Milton and the Massachusetts National Guard in terms of cybersecurity protection. Also, at this forum, that partnership will be formed, cemented, because we'll begin the run-up well beforehand, with permission, of course, and collaboration with the town of Milton, Madam Chair. But also, the town, the Massachusetts National Guard, with experts such as Major Bloom, will help to train town employees, whomever you designate, the Select Board and Mr. Dennehy, to attend this conference and work with the Massachusetts National Guard and educate as best that they can to the level of expertise that the Mass National Guard is at with cybersecurity. Unfortunately, we live in a dangerous world, and various rogue nations, terrorist organizations, criminal enterprises use cyber warfare as a way to commit various acts of malfeasance, and some quite as simple as ransom attacks. Ransomware, what have you, I know Brockton Police has suffered a cyber attack. Various communities across the Commonwealth have been victims of cyber attacks. And this, quite simply, one of these cyber attacks could cost a town the size of Milton millions of dollars in terms of the ransomware that would be sought in return for a return to the stable, a stable situation. So with that, Madam Chair, with your permission, and by the way, there will be no cost to the town of Milton for this partnership and the services and cyber support that the Mass National Guard will provide, which obviously is very important. The expertise the Massachusetts National Guard offers in terms of cybersecurity is second to none. And with that, Madam Chair, with your permission, I'd like to turn over Major Bloom, the Florida Major Bloom, to offer an overview of their capabilities and what this partnership would look like for the town of Milton.
Thank you, Senator, and thank you, Major Bloom. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And members of the Board, as Senator said, my name is Major Joseph Bloom. I'm the executive officer for the 126 Cyber Protection Battalion, currently stationed at Joint Base Cape Cod or Otis Air National Guard Base, if you're more familiar with that location. So as the Senator said, the current threat that exists out there is malicious actors seeking what we call soft targets or key targets. And their prime weapon of choice in seeking those targets is ransomware attacks. It's become the most proliferate choice of malware. And it is becoming increasingly sophisticated to the point where now communities have to be worried about not only the ransomware locking down their networks and costing upwards of $60 to maybe $2 million in damages, but also causing complete wipes of their networks. Some ransomware attacks not only just lock down the system but completely erase the target network, removing all records and everything that you may have contained on those systems. And here in Massachusetts, in recent years, one in six communities in Massachusetts have actually been hit by some type of ransomware attack. And the ransomware attacks on municipalities account for 44% of global attacks. And that was the estimate in 2020, and that has substantially increased in the last two years since that report was put out. And then, of course, as newer technology is continually rolling out every year, it's hard to keep up. So a lot of these attackers will use towns that have older systems on their networks, like Windows 7 or Windows XP, things that are supported anymore or at end of life or end of terms of service, that are no longer supported by the vendors that provided them. And that opens up the attack surface and allows an easy way for these attackers to get into your networks. So the Massachusetts National Guard has been working to stand up what we call a cyber incident response team or a cyber support team to conduct a pre, to conduct pre-incident assessments for the municipalities in the Commonwealth, working with our partners at EYOT, in collaboration with EYOTS, the Mass Cyber Center, as well as working with other federal organizations that provide us intelligence support and that kind of thing. And really a collaborative piece to support any operations that we do. We've been working to provide that critical resource that's needed, which is that pre-incident, coming in before an indicator of compromise or an attack actually occurs, and taking a look at your networks and seeing where your vulnerabilities are and providing recommendations to kind of shore up those vulnerabilities and protect your networks a lot better. And providing that education piece and working with your IT directors to identify issues on your networks, vulnerabilities, and just making overall recommendations on how you can better protect yourselves and your networks and the citizens of your town. So the Massachusetts National Guard, right now, my battalion is made up of 53 personnel here in Massachusetts. We're also spread out all over New England. We have detachments in Connecticut, Vermont, Maine and New Hampshire, as well as the Air National Guard, who are currently on a rotating mission right now, conducting their cyber, their Title X mission for cyber support to the United States Air Force active-duty side. Along with that, what we've been doing as well is continuing to build partnerships across the Commonwealth. So we also, along with this pre-incident support and supporting our education and training, we have established a lot of partnerships that aid our soldiers in bettering their skills. So we have academic partnerships with University of Massachusetts in Dartmouth. We are developing other partnerships with, like Bridgewater State, Northeastern University, and some other universities that actually do cybersecurity research or train and educate their students in cybersecurity operations. So we're looking to develop those partnerships a lot more to continue to expand our capabilities. And as the Senator said earlier, one of the things that we do host yearly is Cyber Yankee, which is a joint inter-agency exercise that's built around incident response to an attack on critical infrastructure. And again, that involves not only the Mass State Police, representatives from EYOTS and EYOTS, as well as the Coast Guard, all of our sister services. We've had participants from the Marine Corps who act as our red team. We've had Air Force Reserve, Air National Guard. We also had a representative from the United States Navy observing this past year, as well as, we're looking, they're actually looking to expand it to the Space Force, since that actually opened up, but that will probably be another two years down the road before we have any representatives from the Space Force. But again, this, the real concept that we're trying to get to is this pre-incident response, providing a team, not only from the Massachusetts National Guard, but also from standing up a cyber state defense force under the organized militia and the Massachusetts State Defense Force, which is organized under Chapter 33 of Massachusetts General Law. And that would leverage civilians that have the technical skills to, in information technology and cybersecurity, who may not want to or may not be able to join the Guard, but are able to provide their skill sets, their expertise to support the Commonwealth as part of the cyber state defense force. That's a concept that we're currently developing. We hope to have up in operational capability in the next couple, in the next year or two, year or two. And lastly, as part of developing this concept to provide this pre-incident response team, we actually conducted a proof of, what we call a proof of concept mission. We were invited by one municipality, I won't disclose the name due to the non-disclosure agreements that we signed, to actually conduct a pre-incident assessment. And one of the things that we found while doing that pre-incident assessment were several issues. The IT director actually invited us in because he was relatively, he was really new to the position. Didn't know what his network looked, didn't have a lot of solid documentation of what his network looked like. He was trying to get a good idea. And that leads to, the number one problem we found is that a lot of municipalities and a lot of towns are understaffed. Their IT directors are either new or just don't have the staff underneath them to support network operations for the town. And then the second, the second issue that we found was a lot of, there was a lot of unknowns to their network. So we had to go in and do a complete network discovery to figure out what systems, operating systems, types of machines, who has signed on, who shouldn't be signed on, and just kind of given an idea of how, what the topology of that network looked like. And we found that it was a very flat network, meaning that there wasn't a lot of security, and it could be easily breached. I think one of the, one of the things that we found is that someone in the library, in the town library, could actually sign into the town hall's network and breach the town hall's network. Another thing that we found is that the systems that protect the, that manage the flow of water to the town could be easily accessed. So a number of vulnerabilities were discovered, and we actually made several recommendations, remediated where we could, and where we were authorized, what part of the networks we were authorized to touch. And it was actually a very eye-opening experience for that, for that town board, as well as the IT director. And I believe they're currently working to shore up a lot of those vulnerabilities right now. And with that, I will pause for any questions from the board.
Thank you very much, Major Bloom and Senator Timmeltine. Thank you both. This is a critically important topic. It may be a little bit dry for some of our viewers, but this is something that does present substantial risk to businesses as well as municipalities. And it's certainly a hot topic for the Mass Municipal Association. So thank you for coming in tonight and for offering this forum and potentially some other services. This is something that the town could certainly take good advantage of. Does any member of the board have a comment or a question for Major Bloom or Senator Timmeltine? Mr. Doyle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to compliment all who are involved in this very important initiative. This is a major part of the global landscape, whether we like it or not. And we have to address it, and these types of initiatives are most welcome, public, private sector, nonprofit, and so on down the line, let alone our military, government agencies, right down to the town of Milton. So thank you.
I see Mr. Dennehy's hand is raised. Mr. Dennehy.
Yes, thank you.
And Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Major, and thank you, Senator, for bringing this. Our reinvigorated IT committee in town identified this as one of the priorities. Member Crummy actually gave a brief presentation to some town employees last week about the necessity of making sure that we're aware of this. So the timing of this is perfect, and look forward to this exercise. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Senator, and thank you, Maje, for coming in tonight. I think we all realize that in the world today, cyber war is perhaps the one we fear the most that could absolutely cripple this country as we know it, our daily operations. So I think this is definitely a proactive step. I would much rather for us, understanding the negative side to what it is like when you are victimized such as this or the victim of an attack, what it could do to our daily operations and our town government, and how long we could be unable to operate, ineffective. And as the major noted, the cost, imagine us faced with a $2 million burden to try and get back what we would lose in a cyber attack. Thank you again for that, and whatever we can do to get this moving forward. I could take it the major does not have a Massachusetts accent, so I hope he's enjoying, I hope he's enjoying this New England weather, and at least he's on Camp Edwards, as I would refer to. At least he's on Camp Edwards, so, for Base Cape Cod, so maybe there's not as much snow down there as we've had. So thank you again. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. And southeastern Massachusetts is where I'm from.
Are you really?
No, it's the joke that I make all the time.
That's good, though. That's good. Just hope you're from New Bedford. That definitely.
Major Bloom, I'm proud to say, is one of my constituents.
Very good. Mr. Azulis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Senator Timmeltine, and thank you, Major Bloom. Major Bloom, I'm not sure how much you can talk about it, but can you talk about, a little bit about the process for the pre-incident assessment? How many resources you usually use, personnel, how long it takes? Maybe how long before we could get started, and some of the process for that? And again, I'm not sure how much you can disclose, but whatever you can tell us about how that, how that has affected, I think would be useful.
If I can jump in for one moment, Major and Mr. Azulis. As far as start time, we can start forging this partnership tomorrow, if the town's ready. Whenever the town would like to jump in, I will make sure, in conjunction with my office, that we start and hit the ground running. Just, and Major Bloom, please, continue.
Thank you, Senators. Thank you, Mr. Azulis. So as far as the timeframe that it would take, typically, we're, right now, we're still working out how the request process works. Like I said, the proof of concept just kind of identified what we could and couldn't do, and it provided us a good starting point with that process. And that's one of the things that we're working on right now. Typically, what would happen is, is a request would go to, either, I think right now, they were, we were planning on the Mass Cyber Center being the central location for those requests. Or I know they're still working out that process. Typically, for use of guard resources, it would go through what we call our Domestic Operations Support Office. Regardless, though, a request would be sent up, and we, and our team would be notified. And then we would alert a team of soldiers based on their availability, because typically, our soldiers in the cyber battalion, they also work for cybersecurity firms such as Dragos, but some of them also work for federal organizations like DHS, SISA, or the NSA. So gauging that availability, bringing a team of about three to five personnel onboard to support that. The mission that we, the proof of concept mission that we initiated back last June, that took a relatively short amount of time. It was, start to finish, even with the breaks in between, was about 20 days. And that was speaking with the IT director, getting a proper assessment of the network, getting some documentation of the network, getting an idea of what the needs of the town were. And that's the first, and that's the first step, is speaking with the IT director, speaking with the town board, gauging the needs of the town, what they're exactly looking for. And then also gauging how well they actually know their network. And that, like I said, that proof of concept, relatively small municipality in Massachusetts, so it only took about 20 days. Larger municipalities and towns and cities would take a longer time, and depending on how robust their IT staff is. Like I said, the request is sent up. It would take about a week for us to organize our soldiers, put them on the proper status for pay allowance purposes. And then, we would start the talks with the IT director. And that typically takes about two days, two meetings. And that's essentially to sign the memorandum of agreement, as well as the non-disclosure agreements that are necessary for us to conduct our work. Once those agreements are signed by the IT director and the town board, then, and approved by the legal authorities, lawyers on your end, and as well as by Judge Appiga Generals, we would bring our soldiers in to start the work, getting the necessary permissions that we would need on the network. And again, once that's already, once that's established and we have access to the network, we would begin with what the town needs. So if it's a network discovery, you're not really sure what's on your network, we can do a full network sweep and identify current and maybe potential items that are machines and networks and servers that you don't, that you didn't really know were connected to the network. If the documentation is great, you actually know what's on the network, we can do a vulnerability assessment, and just jump right into the work of vulnerability remediation, doing more secure credential scans, finding out if there's any operating systems that haven't been patched properly, or any certain applications that haven't been patched in a while, and those types of vulnerability assessments. And then, at the very end of it, once we complete the scans and we complete the vulnerability assessment, our analysts will take it back, compile a list, and present a briefing to not only the IT director, but the town board as well, showcasing what we found, what our recommendations are. And then all that documentation is provided to the IT director and the town board, and then we destroy all the documentation that we have on our end. We do not retain any information about the town or anything that we discovered on your network. It is all handed off to you guys at the end of our mission. And what you decide to do with it is up to the, is up to the town board and the IT director. However, if we do find any malicious actors on your network, we will notify the Mass State Police and the Fusion Center directly, and that will initiate a law enforcement action on their end. And we stop, we immediately stop work from there.
Thank you, Major. And just, just so I understand, to start this off, it sounds like it's the request to the National Guard. And is that request, is that right? And is that request a request for a pre-incident assessment? Is that how we kick it off? Or is it something else?
If I may, Major, I'm sorry, Mr. Azulis, sorry to interrupt. If I may follow up for a moment, as I mentioned a few moments ago, and thank you for the excellent answer, Major. You know, I had a virtual conversation with General Keith last night, and met with him this morning at the Armory. So to initiate, Mr. Azulis, right off the bat, we can hit the ground running tomorrow, through myself and my office, we can start the process for the town. And then, from there, we would obviously pick up along the pathway that Major Bloom so wainfully laid out for us.
Thank you, Senator.
Major, feel free, obviously, to expound upon that.
Yes, because the structures for, right now, since we're still in that proof of concept phase before we hit full operational capability, the requests are in a more of an ad hoc mode, as the Senator described. So requests through his office will certainly be, will reach our, will reach our Defense Cyber Operations Center.
Thank you very much, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to express appreciation to both Senator Timmeltine and Major Bloom for bringing this to our attention. Early on, it's a major resource. I do have one follow-up question for the major for later, but at this time, I would hope that the board might come to at least a consensus that a formal motion is not needed to pursue the request process. To sweep.
Based on the comments, I think there's a lot of interest in seeing whether we can become, whether Milton can be a candidate for this service that the, that the National Guard is offering. So if we need a formal vote, we could put it on for the 15th, but we could also make, Senator Timmeltine's here, we could just discuss it this evening, see if we have a consensus, and then move the request forward. We'll ask Mr. Dennehy to get in touch with Senator Timmeltine's office tomorrow morning, if that makes sense. And if we need a formal vote, we'll do that at the next meeting. Mr. Wells?
I think that final comment you just made, Madam Chair, is the fastest, the most efficient way to go. But Mr. Dennehy began the conversation with Senator Timmeltine's office tomorrow morning, and get this done. This isn't something that should be bogged down at all. This is something very quick, and I'm sure, once you bring on our IT people, you'll be able to get this operational. So that would be my suggestion, Madam Chair. I would concur with what you just said.
Okay, and I see people nodding and Mr. Dennehy giving the thumbs up. This might be one of his final acts to, in office, to move this forward, which would be great. Very important topic. Unless anyone has anything else, then I want to thank.
The second question for Major Bloom. After the initiative takes place and is concluded, maybe in quotes, Major Bloom, is there ongoing a follow-up processing planned so that an audit or a review takes place at a six-month, 12-month, 18-month type of an interval?
Well, that would be, that would be another request from the town. After a certain amount of time, if the town wishes for us to return to reassess the network, then we can most certainly do so. That is actually a part of our processes that we've identified as, as being able to do, is come back and reassess the town and do follow business to see if those vulnerabilities were, or in fact remediated in an effective manner. Because we say remediated and not eliminated, because you can never eliminate all the threats and vulnerabilities to your network. You can only assume risk and remediate as best as possible to reduce the amount of risk to your network and yourselves and your citizens. So yes, we most certainly can return at a, in a year, two years. Typically, typically, the best engage of that is about 18 months to two years for any type of follow-on reassessments.
Thank you very much, Major.
You're welcome.
All right. If no one has anything else, then I want to thank Senator Timmeltine for bringing this to our attention, and Major Bloom and Senator Timmeltine for coming in this evening and presenting it, and offering this service to the town in addition to the pre-incident assessment, the forum on the 30th for our IT staff and any other employees that Mr. Dennehy may think are appropriate, would be a good thing for the town to participate in.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. Thank you very much. If I may just follow up for a moment.
Absolutely.
On March 30th, of course, I'm looking forward to hosting this in conjunction with General Keith. And obviously, I would welcome any attendance from any member of the board who would like to attend. I've already had extensive discussions, of course, with yourself, Madam Chair, and Mr. Doyle and Mr. Azulis, and of course, Mr. Wells and Mrs. Collins, and Mr. Dennehy, please, your attendance would be most welcome. And I thank the board for supporting this initiative. Unfortunately, this is not just the future, this is the present. A neighboring community to the town of Milton just recently was victimized by a cyber attack. And it is something that is a threat to our national security, and it is also a threat to our well-being at the level of the Commonwealth and to each and every municipality in the Commonwealth. So with, it's my intention to protect each and every town in the Commonwealth as best we can. And we're going to start right now with the 10 towns that I'm privileged to represent as the Chair of Public Safety, and obviously as your state senator. But March 30th will be, I believe, a very productive forum. But before that, we're going to hit the ground running. And as soon as the town is ready, I will initiate this with the Massachusetts National Guard. And I would also like to thank Major Bloom very much for your service, Major, to our country and to the Commonwealth. Thank you all.
Thank you very much to both of you, and have a good evening.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Major.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this brings us to item five, which is public comment. So we have many people here in our group of attendees. If there is anyone who would like to speak and public comment, please raise your hand. If you're on the telephone, star six to unmute, and star nine, I believe, to speak. I see no hands raised. We'll wait another few seconds. Okay, then, okay, we have one hand raised. It's a telephone ending, the numbers end in 838. okay, we have one hand raised. It's a telephone ending, the numbers end in eight, three, eight. So if you were on the telephone, eight, three, eight, you're recognized. You'll, you'll need to unmute. I think it's star six to unmute. Yes. Good evening.
Hello? Hello?
Hello, yes, we can hear you.
Okay. This is Phil Drowhining, 23 Parkwood Drive. Um, I have a few comments to make about the town administrator position. Um, I, I don't know what happens in the town, but, uh, in private companies, all the companies I've worked for in my lifetime, there's typically an exit interview. I don't know if there's time to arrange some type of independent exit interview, uh, for Mr. Dennehy. But it, I worry that there's something wrong with the way the position is constructed. Um, since I've lived in Milton, which is approaching 13 years, we've had, uh, three town administrators, Kevin Mern, Anne Marie Fagan and Mike Dennehy. Um, and now we'll have a fourth before, uh, we reach my, the end of my 13th year. So, uh, something seems to be wrong. I'm not exactly sure, uh, what that is, but perhaps an exit interview, um, you know, effectively conducted could identify problems with the position. And maybe reasons or ways that the position can be reconstructed so that, um, it's easier to retain, uh, an individual in the post. Um, we talked about John Cronin tonight. Uh, he was in the position, from what I can see, for 33 years. Uh, I think, uh, long tenure in that type of position is really critical to establish direction for the town. And, uh, I, I don't know that that type of direction, that long-term direction, um, that, uh, that push, uh, uh, for service to residents, um, has, has really, uh, it been demonstrated in, in my time here. Um, I think, uh, within the selection process, uh, pe- people should be looked at in both the private and the public sector. John Cronin, again, came from the private sector. Uh, and so it, it appears that not just public sector, uh, candidates can succeed in the position. And I think it is important that private sector candidates be, uh, considered. Um, it, it's, it's a different mindset, uh, and I think it's important to look at that different mindset and consider it, uh, for the position. I think John Cronin was effective. He was a very long-term, uh, uh, town administrator. And so, um, perhaps we could reconstruct that, that, that type of, uh, uh, individual in the position, um, by broadening, uh, our view of, of who we would consider. Um, as far as compensation is concerned, I think, uh, the, the, the compensation right now for that position, uh, is really too high. I think the cap for the compensation of the position should be, uh, no more than the mayor of the city of Boston. Uh, I understand that the mayor of the city of Boston makes 199,000. Uh, and I think if, uh, you know, we're not Boston. And so I'm not sure that our town administrator should be compensated at a level above the mayor of Boston. And so I think the compensation should be, uh, reconsidered. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joe Henning. I see no other hands for citizen speak or public comment this evening. So we will move on to our next agenda item, item, which is, the Algonquin gas transmission. Um, we're going to have a, a present, I believe, a comments or an update or a presentation by Mr. Bonsalay or Bonsall regarding the, um, land adjacent to the Granite Links Golf Course. So I see you've been moved up to panelists. Welcome, Mr. Bonsall.
Thank you for the promotion.
For joining us. And, uh, Mr. Dennehy, Mr. Dennehy or Mr. Doyle, because this to touch on the Conservation Commission role also, I may have an introduction to this that they'd like to bring to our attention before Mr. Bonsall speaks.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Very briefly, uh, Mr. Bonsall reached out, uh, about this, uh, issue. Uh, he's joined tonight by Miss Nancy Kiss and Mr. Joe Bruno, who will present to us. Um, Mr. Vice Chair Doyle, I'm not sure if this was taken up, um, at the Conservation Commission, but uh, I heard from a very reliable source that, uh, Mr. John Cannon, the Chair of the Conservation Commission, uh, used to cheat off Mr. Bonsall, uh, at Milton High School back in 1966. So they're classmates, uh, very well-known, uh, in the industry. Um, and, and I'll, I'll leave it at that. So welcome, Mr. Bonsall, uh, and Ms. Kiss and, and Mr. Bruno.
Will we be on the statute of limitations on that crime?
Not, not quite, not quite. There's video evidence. Uh, John and I had the pleasure of being classmates, uh, uh, from Milton High School in 1966. And, uh, John had the pleasure of being, uh, Vice President of the Class and I had the distinction of being the, the President of the Class. Uh, so John and I have been friends for many years and, uh, and colleagues. I obviously grew up in Milton, up by Holton's Pond. Uh, some of you have probably gotten lost out there and were a little surprised that it was part of Milton. Um, my friends in East Milton used to think I grew up down by Mattapan and my friends at Mattapan thought I grew up at, uh, uh, you know, closer to where East Milton, et cetera. Uh, cause nobody ever saw me during the summer, just kind of disappeared for, for two months at that point. Um, but thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Uh, I am joined by two of my colleagues. Uh, Nancy Kiss, uh, who is, uh, is the Director of, uh, right, our Right-of-Way Group for Algonquin Gas Transmission. And, uh, is responsible for all the outreach with the landowners, et cetera. Uh, and Joe Bruno is the Area Manager for the Transmission Group, uh, within Algonquin. And, uh, that basically means he's responsible for making sure that the gas is delivered safely to our customers, uh, throughout the eastern Massachusetts. Um, again, we're here tonight on behalf of Algonquin Gas Transmission, which has facilities in, uh, the town of Milton. Uh, Algonquin is also owned by Enbridge. Uh, and so you'll hear Nancy and Joe, uh, and myself interchangeably, uh, referred to Algonquin uh, or Enbridge, but it's essentially the same, uh, project. Uh, we have some work that we're going to do at a, uh, uh, adjacent to our, our, uh, pipeline, uh, across the street essentially from Wallaston Country Club. Uh, and we'll show you some aerials to give you a little bit better idea of what we're talking about. Uh, we're going to put a filter separator in and Joe will describe a little bit, uh, of what's involved in that. Uh, the work is scheduled to, uh, begin sometime in the middle of May, uh, or, or around that time. Uh, and would probably take about eight weeks to, to complete. Um, the access to, uh, the site, and then I'm going to put, try to put up a, uh, uh, an aerial which Nancy will walk you through. Uh, the access, uh, is off of Randolph Ave, uh, literally across the street from where Highland Street, uh, comes into Randolph Ave. Uh, you, you've probably driven by it a hundred times, uh, and never saw that, uh, there was a little uh, space there for people to drive in. That's the beginning of the access road, uh, that not only Algonquin uses, but National Grid, because, uh, our work is really, uh, in, within the footprint of where they have their facilities. Uh, and Joe, again, will explain what the, uh, the facility is, uh, accomplishes that we're going to do. So let me see if I can, um.
Mr. Bonsall, I can share my screen and, and what you had sent me.
All right, let's do that. That might be easier.
Everyone see that?
So Nancy's going to, uh, walk you through this to give you a sense of, uh, and orient you in terms of where the, uh, the work is going to encourage. You can see it's in a pretty remote portion of Milton. Um, significantly distanced from the closest residential areas, et cetera. So Nancy, if you'd like to, to walk people through a little bit.
Sure. Uh, thanks, John. Uh, once again, folks, my name is Nancy Kiss. I'm a Senior Advisor for Lands and Right-of-Way for Enbridge. And, uh, I support, uh, a team of folks, uh, in the Lands and Right-of-Way Group, uh, that support projects for the company. Uh, in a geographic region that, uh, is spans eastern Pennsylvania all the way up to, to Maine's border with, uh, Canada. So, um, the work that we're bringing, uh, to your attention this evening is the, uh, a maintenance project to install a piece of equipment called a filter separator. And, uh, Joe Bruno will explain, uh, the, exactly the, the function of a, of a filter separator, uh, in our pipeline system. Uh, as you can see, the, the green box in the middle of the screen, that is, uh, a, a piece of property that's owned by National Grid subsidiary, Boston Gas. Uh, the street address is 750 Randolph Avenue, but as you can see, it's, it's, uh, a bit of a way, uh, from Randolph Avenue itself. As John noted, uh, we use this access road. Uh, so does National Grid and, and actually, uh, so does, uh, uh, so do, uh, folks that are, that do maintenance work, uh, on the golf course. Uh, so, you know, there's a, there's a gate at Randolph Avenue and, uh, we each have, uh, uh, keys there. Uh, you know, sometimes we daisy chain with others or we just share, share the same lock system. Uh, so folks can, uh, get, get up the access road and when the access road is in use, uh, it's, 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 uh, it's, it's locked off again, uh, to prevent trespassers. So, uh, we come in off of Randolph Avenue, our pipeline, which is part of our Q1, uh, pipeline system, actually comes up and the nearest cross street for our pipeline crossing roadway is Chickatobit Road. Uh, and we come up through, uh, the Massachusetts DCR land, which is part of Blue Hills Reservation, uh, to the, uh, the, uh, the meter station where we, uh, deliver gas, uh, to the customer. And then, uh, the, the pipeline leaves the, the, the station and heads down through, uh, the golf course. Uh, before moving on to other delivery points, uh, to customers. As John noted, we're looking at a six to eight week construction period roughly, uh, weather permitting. And, you know, and, uh, and we need to continue, we'll, we'll be working out the access and sharing that road with National Grid. As we understand it, National Grid has a separate, uh, some separate work going on up there, uh, at their station. So we are in close coordination with National Grid to make sure that we can get our work done and that our work doesn't, uh, interfere with their planned work, uh, in, in, in the, in the station and along the access road, uh, this year as well. What my group does, uh, and I have, uh, two, two individuals who are assigned specifically to this project, a gentleman named Joe Cunningham and, uh, another young man named Mark Dorso. And, uh, they support project personnel and those project personnel, uh, you know, who, who, uh, construction, design. Uh, the folks from Ops like, such as Joe Bruno. And what we do is we reach out to, to landowners that, uh, would be affected by our project. And we go out and we introduce ourselves, provide our, our contact information and let folks know when construction is about to happen. And in the event that any questions arise, uh, folks have that personal touch. They know who they can call to ask for questions. And, uh, we're there to support the, the project from beginning to end. Uh, and to address any landowner questions or concerns that come up. Um, if, you know, if, uh, we, if we use the, the area and, uh, somehow we, you know, we, 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 we rut out some, the, the road, we fix it. If we, uh, you know, if we, uh, cause damage to grass or trees, we fix it, you know? And, and, and our, our goal is to make sure that at the end of any particular, uh, project, that our landowners are, are happy with what we've done. Uh, we, we strive not to inconvenience them and, and to address their concerns along the way. If, if there's something that, uh, that is having a negative impact on, on their quality of life or their use of their property, uh, during construction. Um, with that, I think I'll turn it over to Jo, to Joe to, uh, explain the specifics of, uh, the filter separator project itself.
Yep. Thanks, Nancy and John. And, and good evening, everybody. Like John said, my name's Joe Bruno. Um, I'm the Area Operations Manager for Enbridge Algonquin Gas in Massachusetts. Um, I'm, I'm based out of Westwood. Uh, we have offices in Westwood, Wamif, Haverhill and Dayton, Massachusetts, that we, we cover all those areas. Um, so yeah, this is a maintenance project in which we're installing a filter separator. Uh, thanks for pulling the picture up. Um, so this, this facility here in Milton is what we refer to as a, a gate station or a meter station, uh, or a custody transfer station. Um, we joint operate this facility with National Grid. Um, so our pipeline comes into the facility, uh, delivers high pressure natural gas. Um, we meter the gas at this facility and then we turn it over to National Grid. Um, they regulate the pressure down to a lower pressure and then out into, uh, end users on, of their customers. Um, so what we're doing as part of this project is installing a filter separator, um, which is what the picture is in front of us. Um, what this, what this filter separator does is it has the ability to filter out any kind of liquids or particulates from the gas. Um, it takes them out of the gas stream that, that, um, and, and drops them down into that lower area, um, on the vessel. So the top part of this vessel is the actual filter. Inside there is filter elements, um, that can be replaced. Um, and then i- if anything is collected, um, it would drop down into the bottom tank there, which is, we call a sump tank, um, where that either liquid or solid material can be measured, um, and then actually removed from the pipeline. Um, not shown in the pictures, we actually have a, that, that smaller piping runs to basically an outlet, um, where we can hook up some type of, of, of vehicle, um, to actually drain, drain the vessel of any kind of liquids or particulates. I- in order to install this, um, we do have to shut the station down for a short period of time. That's something we do with National Grid. Um, they have redundancy on their end of the system. So it won't be an impact to any downstream customers or residential customers. Um, likely the outage will be maybe five to seven days. Um, we cut out some sections of old pipe. We tie in new pipe to this filter. Um, and we gas it up and put everything back in service. So that, that, that's basically the gist of the project we have scheduled for this year.
As I indicated at the outset, you know, we're thinking, we're planning on this in the May timeframe. Uh, and as you probably could, you know, gather from the remarks, um, uh, Algonquin Gas is an interstate gas pipeline company. And so our customers are National Grid, uh, and, and Eversource, uh, District Gas. Uh, our customers are not, you know, residential on Canton Avenue, uh, et cetera. So, uh, that's why, you know, we provide the gas at that particular location to grid to serve, uh, this section of, you know, service territory. Uh, and, uh, this facility is designed, as Joe said, to take the, uh, uh, any liquids or other particulates that might be in there and remove it from the gas stream before delivery to, uh, National Grid. So that, uh, that's our overview. Um, we're obviously available to answer any questions or provide any additional information that the board is looking for.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Bonsall and to your colleagues. Does any member of the board have a question or a comment? Mr. Dennehy, anything else that you would like to add?
No, I was just wondering if there was any permitting process involved. Uh, what, what role does, does the, does the town play? I know it's, it's multi-jurisdictional. Um, what, what, how can we help you? What, what's the permitting process look like? What, what, what were some of the pros and cons from the, the last time this took place?
As an interstate gas pipeline facility, uh, the, the Algonquin's facilities are regulated at the federal level and in this case, US DOT. Uh, so we don't come in to get a building permit. Uh, there are no, no wetland impacts. There are no resource impacts. Uh, we're using an established access road. Uh, there are no impacts to wetland resources up near the facility. Everything's going to be done within the fence line. Uh, so from our perspective, this is really, you know, an opportunity to make sure the community is aware, uh, that we're going to be doing some work up there, uh, but we're not specifically going through a permitting process per se with the town certainly.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Zulus?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Just very quickly, it didn't sound like there's any, uh, anticipated disruption to the residents from this. It sounds like you're going to just be using the access road, but it doesn't. So just want to confirm that there's going to be no disruption to any of the town residents during this project.
Uh, correct. Uh, there, there should be no, no, no disruptions to town residents based on the, the, the remote location. You know, there'll be some construction vehicles, uh, exiting and entering from Randolph Avenue, but that's about it in terms of what, what folks might see of us being out there.
Thank you.
And there are no residences along Randolph Ave where the access point is. And obviously we're up in DCR property. So we're, we're pretty remote in that regard.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. My, uh, my comment, most people in town don't even know who this is. And I, I just think of all my years in the police. I just think of all my years in the police about one of the most common questions that I was asked when a resident would go for a hike or something and find it and have no idea that it existed or and ask what it was because it is so remote in the woods that most residents couldn't see it, no one completely unaware and it's been there for since I was a young kid. It was formerly Duke Energy, am I correct? Before Algonquin, wasn't it Duke? It was Duke Energy. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, then, thank you very much to Mr. Boncel, Ms. Kiss and Mr. Bruno. We appreciate the information.
Thank you for the time, Madam Chair.
And thank you for for your patience.
Have a great meeting.
Good evening, thank you. Okay, it's eight thirteen. I know Mr. Zulus may need to leave. But we're on to item seven, which is a discussion of the town administrator. So they will go forward unless I get an indication that any member has to leave. Okay. All right, so town administrator. Mr. Denny, he has given us his notice that he's going to be moving on to the private sector. We've all had an opportunity to to talk with him individually, he's notified us all, we have a letter from Mr. Denny. And so tonight, we're going to talk about the process for an interim and a permanent replacement, but it's appropriate, I think, for us to recognize all that that Mike Denny has contributed to the town over the past five years. I know we're all grateful for his service and his contributions. It is a very tough job to be town administrator. You have five members of a select board, you have the general public calling, emailing, stopping into the office. Elected and appointed volunteer boards who have needs at all times of the year. Social media in itself has really changed the role of everyone in government, including the town administrator. And the the budget challenges that we face really make it that revenue Milton is revenue restricted because of our lack of commercial properties, so we, there's a lot of budget challenges and that makes it difficult to try to do as many things as you would like to do. I I want to recognize I was on the board when Mike came into this position and he brought with him a rolodex of contacts from Boston and state government, and that has been very helpful to Milton. Mike's hired some excellent department heads and employees in town hall. If we had to go through and name them all, I know I would forget some of them, so I'll stay away from the names tonight, but he's made terrific operational improvements in the Department of Public Works in particular and in other departments. And I'm just very grateful to Mike for his service. The question that came up at public comment about the role, you know, when we were in the process five years ago. The advice we got from a lot of different quarters was that if you can get five good years out of a town administrator, you're you're lucky in that the process would have worked because people do move around in these jobs and it's not common, there are some, but it's not common to have someone in the role for thirty three years the way John Cronin was. So it's a changing environment and it's a it's a big issue at the MMA that there's not a lot of people in the pipeline coming up into town finance director jobs and town administrator jobs. There's a there's a lack of a bench coming into those roles. So I would give Mr. Denny an opportunity to say a few words and I think other members of the board may wish to offer some comments on his service.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Katie, thank you for the kind words. Yeah, it it seems like yesterday when I went through the interview process and and through the selection committee and it was one of the most thorough processes I've I've been a part of. I I'm really going to miss the town. It's been a wonderful five years for myself. Want to thank my wife and my family. Just very briefly, it's been a privilege and honor to serve the town as its administrator for the last five plus years. My career in public service is coming to an end. It's been motivated extremely highly by a commitment to deliver the highest level of quality of life services each and every day, and I think we did that. Similar to my days in Boston. And you touched upon this, Katie, my days in Boston at the Public Works Department. The town of Milton has a very dedicated and talented team of employees who share that same conviction that I do to deliver quality of life services each and every day. So I just, I want to thank you personally for for being here through my entire time and all of my board members, all the employees. It's been a wonderful opportunity and I look forward to the next chapter.
All right, any member like to say anything before we get into things like when Mike's final day will be and all of that, but the process will be.
Very bittersweet. Thank you.
I think we have plenty of time for goodbyes.
Okay, all right, well, we do have, you're right, we do have a couple more meetings that we can we'll be certainly be able to to say some more about Mike's tenure in Milton. Mr. Denny has asked us, his contract provides a ninety day notice period. He has asked us to waive that ninety day period and talking with Mr. Denny. He has asked that board consider his last day in office being Friday, February twenty fifth. So that that's a couple of weeks away and I wanted to, if if everyone wasn't aware of that, just to bring that to everyone's attention. It looks like a couple of members may wish to say something. I don't want to jump ahead if anyone did want to jump in. Mr. Zulus?
Well, Madam Chair, we we do have time and and we can say more, but I but since the timeframe may be short. And I and I wasn't prepared for a requiem tonight either, but but I will say that, you know, when looking back on any endeavor seems to me if you're able to say you worked hard and you worked well and you had a little fun along the way, then it's been a successful tenure and I and I think I think that's easy to say with Mike and and Mike's had a lot of success. And I think when you look back at the last five years, I think we can say we saw a lot of good government over the last five years and it's a lot of it's attributable to Mike, so I just want to, as as Richard said, we could say other things, but I didn't want to let the chance go in the event that, you know, if the timeframe is short, you know, maybe maybe I'm not here, I just wanted to say something. Thank you.
Okay. Then, so we also want to talk about the process in talk in general about the interim town administrator. Everyone has in their materials a copy of the special legislation that was passed five years ago that governs the role of the town administrator administrator, including a vacancy in that position. We also have some other materials that have been provided to us by town council and others. So I I'd like to, as as the chair, just to report out to the the rest of the board, when when Mr. Denny notified each of us that he would be stepping down and moving into the private sector. I spoke with Arthur, Vice Chair of the Board. And Arthur and I together consulted with town council and with Labor Council. Kevin Freitag and Andy Wa. And I have to say, there are times when I miss serving on a three-member board, but the past week and a half was not one of them. I'm really grateful to have had the opportunity to consult with a member of the board and I'm grateful to Arthur for all of his wisdom and guidance. And I think both of us would like to thank Kevin and Andy for jumping right in and providing us with a lot of it's not only a sounding board, but some helpful information about the process that the board could consider. And obviously, they've been through this with other communities. So in order for Mike to leave by February twenty fifth, if that's agreeable to the board. I think we need to have an interim town administrator who can hit the ground running. We have a lot that we're coming into in these next couple of months. We we're not only going to have transition on this board, we've had a lot of transition in the office to begin with. We have on our plates special town meeting coming up next month, we have the FY twenty three budget. Annual town meeting and we're in collective bargaining negotiations with all of our unions. On top of everything else on our plates, including the animal shelter, including the fire stations and so many other things. So in talking with Arthur and talking with council, I decided to, as chair, to reach out to a person that I thought would be potentially a good consensus pick and I'm hoping that we can talk about the person's candidacy this evening and I'd like to recommend that the board consider appointing our retired town administrator, Anne Marie Fagan, as the interim town administrator. I spoke with Anne Marie and she is interested in helping the town. She's, anyone who knows Anne Marie knows that she does love the town, she has served for a long period of time in different capacities in the select board office and she is, she's been retired for five years, she's a grandmother, a very active grandmother. But she is willing and able to help us to get through the next few months while we engage in the process of conducting a search. We'll talk a little bit about whether we have a committee, whether we have a consultant when we get to the next section of the agenda. She would be available middle of next week. And in talking with her, some of the issues that we talked about were the fact that this would be a short-term appointment. We'd want to balance work and family, knowing that she's been retired for a number of years. And she would be able to work four days a week full-time, but do it over four days because she does take care of a grandchild one day a week. And that day tends tends to fluctuate, her daughter is a nurse and her hours fluctuates and schedule fluctuates. So she has a little bit of vacation time planned in April and then later in the summer, although I probably the sense among a lot of people I've talked with is that the process could probably be wrapped up before the end of the fiscal year, which would be June thirtieth. So I'd like to open that up for discussion to consider and for the board to consider Anne Marie Fagan. Her name is not on the agenda. If we were to decide to go ahead and make that appointment. If we could schedule a meeting on Tuesday evening, we could put it on an agenda to take to take a vote, but I wanted to put that out as somebody to consider, especially given all of her experience in human resources and collective bargaining negotiations, as well as with the budget. I think she could really be of assistance to the board on the major issues that are facing us at the present time. So I open, I put that out for discussion to the rest of the board. Ms. Collins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For all the reasons you stated, I don't need to reiterate them. I I think that could be a very good solution. I I wish we could have her five days a week, but but I I I don't know that there is any any perfect solution. And I I, as much as I don't want to let Mr. Denny go, I I would like to to, you know, see him be able to to get on to the next chapter. He's excited and I'm really excited for him too. So grateful for what he's given and and he, you know. I'd like to be able to, as I said, let let him go earlier rather than later. So this seems like a a good solution and we're getting someone who knows the town intimately.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Any other members of the board? It's not uncommon to, in fact, we have a a list of names from the Mass Municipal Association of retired town administrators or people who are in transition who will look to do these appointments. Mr. Zulus?
So so one of the major things we give up by by giving, by waiving the the time period is that transition from one town administrator to the next, the the, you know, face-to-face transition. Where you can kind of hand off and and bring the new town administrator up to speed. I think that that issue is solved to a degree if we move quickly to have Ms. Fagan put in place as the interim because, no, that gives that gives Mike a couple of weeks to transition or week or two to transition to Anne Marie. My hope would be that in addition to that couple of weeks to transition to Anne Marie, when ultimately there is a new town administrator chosen, hopefully Mr. Denny can give that new town administrator a little FaceTime gratis perhaps to to give that town administrator, because that's really the big thing that I see that we're giving up by waiving the time period, but I, as I said, I I think that's solved if we get Ms. Fagan in place. Get that transition between Mike and and Ms. Fagan. And then, you know, then then you'll have a transition from Ms. Fagan to the new town administrator. And hopefully, again, Mike can help out with that a little bit too, so. So I think it's a, I think it's a good plan.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To 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 Mike's point. You're actually not handing off, you're handing back because if memory is correct. Mr. Denny took the role from Mrs. Fagan when she was retiring, am I correct, Katie? Am I correct there?
Yes, that's right.
So I I didn't know you were going to suggest her tonight. If I could just maybe have a date to think on this. That'd be all right. I'd say by Tuesday night, I'd definitely be able to. Ms. Collins' point, having worked with Anne Marie for probably over twenty years, Anne Marie goes back to when everyone was Mrs. Fagan or Mrs. Blue in Mr. Cronin's office, everyone was Mr. and Mrs. She goes back that fast, so. Even though maybe four days, Melinda, as Katie will remember. Anne Marie, like many others who's worked in that office, can be found late at night with the light shining and and so that aspect, she would be able to do that. So if I just maybe like think on it for a day and then let's say by Tuesday night, I would probably be able to do that, maybe as you suggested, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Or anything else yet? Mr. Denny?
Very, very briefly, I I know I put everyone tonight here in an awkward situation with my request to expedite or or waive that ninety day period, so I I really, really appreciate it. I want everyone to know that. I had been working on a succession plan over the last couple of years. I didn't plan on being here forever. Most of us in municipal government try to stay until that eighty percent threshold. I was not one of those person, people, I was, you know, looking to do something later in my career that later just turned out to be sooner, so I do appreciate the accommodation and the consideration for this tonight and thank you, everyone, for the very kind words. We're only as good as the people that that work with us and the town is blessed to have such dedicated workers, so thank you again for considering this.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. Anything else on the on the interim? To Mr. Zulus' point, I think if we're if we were to go in this direction. She would be available middle of next week, that would leave us a week and a half to have a, you know, an overlap of of both Mr. Denny and Ms. Fagan. So I think that that would help the process and and as as Mr. Wells said. You know, Anne Marie, when she was town administrator, was working weekends, nights and obviously, I don't think we would expect that of anyone in the role of a short-term interim town administrator who is here just to handle certain key things. There's a lot on everyone's plate. I think my sense and and I'm interested in what my colleague's sense is, my sense is that we would want to prioritize certain items that really are important for the interim to focus on, knowing that some of the other longer-term issues are going to be handled by the future town administrator and the board and others going forward, but key things like the budget and the upcoming, the two upcoming town meetings and the collective bargaining, we have seven unions out right now. Mr. Denny is in negotiations with them, but that's something that really we need to prioritize for the for the for this role. It's, the board has different, may have some different priorities on its list, but for the TA role, this is certainly one of the big ones. Okay, so i- is everyone available to meet on Tuesday? Tuesday evening at say seven o'clock, but we we may need to meet also for we'll get to it later in the agenda for town meeting purposes for the warrant, we, the governor has not yet signed the legislation on the remote on the remote town meeting, so we're waiting for that to come through in the next couple of days, but we we may need to meet for that purpose as well.
That's fine, as long as we can keep a brief, I'm fine, I'd have, I'd definitely have an hour on Tuesday night, whatever time you want.
Okay, all right, maybe, why don't we plan for say seven o'clock on Tuesday evening?
Sounds good, sounds good.
Available as well. Madam Chair, just one quick, do you repeat the time that Anne Marie Fagan could begin if approved?
I believe it was fifteenth or the sixteenth, which she would be available, so yes, so we meet on the fifteenth, that would be the sixteenth.
Thank you.
And and certainly nothing would stop stop her from asking any questions of Mr. Denny in the interim about what she's getting herself into.
I I don't want to give him up, Mr. Zulus, but I do for know for fact that Mr. Denny and Ms. Fagan have asked each other a lot of questions over the past five years.
Plus, Mr. Denny is a resident of the town and we know where he is.
Arthur, you sound like you're in the CIA.
I would be very willing to share my knowledge with the person who showed me the door, so appreciate it.
Okay, is there is there anything else then on the on the temporary appointment? Okay, then at the same time, really, to go on parallel tracks here, we're going to need to begin a process for searching for the permanent replacement for the town administrator. We have some information, we have some names of search companies, the search, search consultants, rather, that we've received from I reached out to the MMA to get a list from them of companies and these are not recommended, they're just providing a list of companies that do this type of work. We did have a resident. We did have a resident of the town who has HR consulting business who reached out to us. Town council has provided us with some information as to search companies that have been used by other communities, including one which is a state agency, which is, means a slightly different procurement process. So I see Kevin Freitag has joined us. Kevin, if I misstate anything, please correct me, or maybe I should just even go to you as to the RFQ process and the, my understanding is in, in the light of an experience of another client of, of Kevin's firm recently, the cost at the Collins Center was approximately $12,000 for the consulting work. So in that case, if it's under $50,000, you do not have to go for an RFP, you would have to, the town would have to issue a request for it would be an RFQ process, a request for quotations. And in that case, you'd have to go with lowest bidder or, or reject the bids, but the lowest bidder would govern a choice among them, except the state agency is exempt from the procurement process. And the, the Collins Center at UMass, which has provided this service to some communities, is a, is a state agency that would, we could contract with right away. That would not be part of a procurement process. So wanted to see what the, what the board thinks in terms of appointing a search committee and hiring a consultant for this, to assist with the search process. We did have a search committee five years ago. We, at the time, we did not have a member of the board on the search committee, but my, my lesson learned from that search process was that it, it really makes sense. And I think most communities do have a sitting member of the board serving on a search committee. Mr. Wells, your hand is raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry, my four-legged partner. If my memory is correctly, when, when Mr. Dennehy was hired with the search committee, we did not have an outside, am I correct?
We did not have an outside consultant, but we did have a, a town administrator from another community that assisted the committee. So it was, it was not a paid consultant or a professional search company. It was, it was another municipal representative.
Okay, can we have a little time to think about this? We're going to decide this tonight? Maybe till Tuesday?
We, we don't have to decide it tonight. We, the, the idea was just to kind of talk about it, see if we could get a consensus on the direction we wanted to go in. I would just add that, you know, Ms. Collins and I have gone to several MMA conferences regarding the appointment of a town administrator and every community taking part in those has recommended a consultant. And I think we've used a consultant, other, other boards in town, I think, may perhaps schools have used a consultant, but it was advised at, at some of the MMA programs as a best practice.
Just to follow up, I think we only used a consultant when Mr. Home, when Mr. Owen was hired. We definitely did not use one when David Coulter was appointed, Darwin, Kevin Mern was appointed. Now I do, I don't think we did when Anne Marie was appointed. So that's my only, I, I, I'm just I'm a creature of continuity, consistency, doing it the same way we've done it every time. We've done the same with the police chief's process, which even though it's created by statute, that process has worked, as, as it works. There's, I thought I just I would have done it in the past because as one thing the caller did know tonight, we have, seems that this is a position that has changed several times. So just make sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to, to say thank you to town council for the memo on the special search committee. It was really clear and I do like the idea of both having that special committee because I think it allows for flexibility. I think it's very important that someone from the board who's been through the five years of having our first strong town administrator is on the search or at least that the original, I can't remember what it's called, the original vetting preliminary screening committee, that's it. Because a, as I said, I think there are lessons that, that have been learned about what's worked really well and what things that, that, you know, I think things have changed in five years even. And Mr. Dennehy could probably tell us a lot of things that have changed since he came on. So I, I, I do think for that reason, it's really important to have a member of the board on the screening committee. And as you said, you and I have attended a number of sessions, pre-webinar on this topic. And given the fact that the bench of possible municipal candidates is quite thin and, you know, it's, you end up stealing from each other's towns. I think Mr. Joe Henning has something, who knows, maybe, maybe it's a crossover from private industry that, that comes to Milton, but I think we need help. As I said, things have changed a lot. This is really not the old position that, that Mr. Cronin and Ms. Fagan held, though I, I, I know she'd do a wonderful job. But I think it, the world is a little more complicated than it used to be and, and, and we'll need some help. Especially vetting this and doing this quickly. We don't have six months. We, we really need to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an important position. It's a very important position for the town. It's a well-paid position and I think it's very important to have some expertise in the search. I think it's very important for us to hire a consultant to lend that expertise in the search. A consultant that works for this board, that helps the search, the search committee, but works for this board and can help this board in that process. And then I'm obviously in conjunction with that, I'm very much in favor of a screening committee and having a member or members of this board on that screening committee. I think the, the search, I think choosing a consulting, a consultant and putting together a screening committee can be done in parallel. I think since that consultant would be, would be answerable to and hired by this board. So I think that can be done in parallel in order to move things along. So, so my, my inclination here is to move as quickly as possible on seeing who the candidates are for search consultant and putting together a screening committee at the same time.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Mr. Wells. Richard, you're on you.
Sorry, Madam Chair, just following up. I absolutely concur with the committee. Just as if we're going to do a consultant though, I think it needs to be sooner versus later. If the consultant's just to work for us, as, as Mr. Zulus said, to help us attract and screen candidates, I'm fine with that. I just, I would rather that our search committee does the, the yeoman's work that is referred to, the message has been done in the past. I think if we're going to do this to Michael's point, I think we need to do this sooner versus later. Better which candidate, which consulting firm it is. We don't have a month, a month to look at consultants. I think we're going to have to maybe even leave that to you and town council or you and the vice chair to do that. I, I don't, I don't necessarily have to be, I leave that to you, Madam Chair, to make that decision how quickly you do that, because I think that's the thing we probably need to do sooner versus later. That's the way.
Okay, thank, thank you. Well, let, let me ask this. Does the board have any? We have a list of consulting companies and we have not reached out to any of them, obviously, but we also have a copy of an agreement that the Collins Center entered into with another community. And again, that one is not subject to procurement. Is the sense of the board that we would like to explore that or that we would like to prepare an RFQ process by which we would solicit bids for this service? Does, does anyone have a preference at this stage? It's, it's something we could take up again on Tuesday. Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I like Mr. Wells' idea that, you know, a, as far as deciding on who to use, that perhaps it could be a smaller, smaller group, not the whole board. I, I am concerned about, you know, taking time for an RFQ. I don't know how quickly we could really get someone because of, you know, having to advertise things like that. Does anyone have a sense of how the Natick process went? Has anyone spoken with anyone from Natick to see how pleased they were with the Collins Center or?
I, I can report that Mr. Freitag has offered to put the representative, I think it's from the Natick Select Board or the Search Committee in touch with me to have, just to give us some advice about their experience. But Mr. Freitag, is there any detail you can provide to Ms. Collins' question?
So, excuse me. Good evening, Madam Chair. Thank you. I'm somewhat hesitant to do that just because my firm also represents Natick. So I think the best way for that communication to come across would be from the chair of the screening committee to speak with the chair of your board and to convey that message. Just regarding the solicitation process, the, if the estimate for the services is under $50,000, which I think is appropriate here, given that the Collins quote for the same services was 12,000, then that procurement process is very quick. It just requires put together a written solicitation, which I can have to you within a week. And then you could immediately put it out and you can actually, you put it out generally, but you can contact certain consultants with the solicitation directly to sort of speed up the process. So it, it, it moves much more quickly than a standard RFP process would. Our firm has done this in the past, so I have access to the documents that we could use to turn around a, a written solicitation for those services, for the consultant services very quickly.
Okay, Mr. Wells and then Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think my question was coming from Melinda. I think town council may have answered the question. My first question was the one, the one community that, that the Collins Center represents is, is a, is a community that's comparable to us. It's Natick and, and it's recent. And I take it this is, you know, it wasn't five years ago. It's like
Within the past year, yeah. Within the past year.
So two, two points. A, if you decide that that's the route you want to go, I'd be comfortable with that. And B, if you want to wait a week and have town council develop a quick RFQ, I'll file that either. But if, if you want to speak perhaps with the chair of the board there, Madam Chair, and see how it went, I'd, I'd be happy with that as well. I don't think there's going to be an exorbitant amount. I think it'll definitely be under 50,000. So I think statutory, you'll be all right. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I do think we should look at other alternatives other than just the Collins Center. I don't think this should be kind of sole source. So, so I would, I would hope Mr. Freitag could put something together quickly, perhaps by next week, we, by next Tuesday night, we can have an, have something to send out and, and, and start contacting some of these firms and so we can get something in place or get, or have some options in short order rather than just to have one option.
Mr. Wells.
Madam Chair, to expedite what my brother just said, this would be appropriate to make a motion tonight to direct town council to, to begin in this process tonight, given the time consideration of that. He just thought he's going to need a weekend or we should start this tonight and vote on it.
To prepare the solicitation is, yes, is, so it sounds like at least for a couple of members of the board, that's the consensus that we'll at least, we'll go, and I see others, Melinda's nodding.
I'll make that a motion, Madam Chair, to do that.
That's good, Madam Chair.
Okay, and, and as I had understood, the motion was to authorize town council to draft a solicitation and it may be something we need to have on our agenda again on Tuesday for another vote, but to start the process. Okay, then any discussion on that motion? All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, yes, Mr. Freitag.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just again, to kind of expedite the process, do you, would you like me to also reach out to the Collins Center? I can do both at the same time and hopefully get those, you know, put those together sooner or later.
I, I don't see why not. Does any member of the board have any concern with that? It seems to me we, we find out what the, you know, what their availability and their cost is and see whether it may be lower than what the RFQs provide. So we'd probably do both. Mr. Doyle?
Madam Chair, you tricked the words out of my mouth. I think checking on their availability would be very important. I agree with Mr. Wells on the, the timing imperative that we're faced with. I did go online and take a look at several resources, including the Collins Center and I would encourage other members of the board to do so if they have a chance. They have worked with a very large number of communities within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts with respect to the recruitment of town administrators.
Yes. Yes, and, and anyway, everyone may want to check out the website there just to see what their experience has been in other communities and with, with those positions. Okay, so we're going to go down that, that two-step track and have town council prepare the solicitation and reach out to the Collins Center on our behalf. In terms of the committee, we should probably talk a little bit about what the committee should look like. Whether we want certain, whether we, whether we all were in agreement that one or two members of our board should be a member of the committee. Whether we want groups such as the Equity and Justice Committee to be represented, the school department to be represented. There's a, the relationship between two, school and town is very important. So there may be a desire to have some school representation on the committee. Others, what are people's thoughts on the size of the committee and on how we make the appointment, other groups we should be looking to, to draw from? Mr. Wells.
What was the size of the last committee? Do, do we?
Yeah, it was seven and you know, I, I, I think for each process is probably a learning experience and there are things that work and things that don't work. And again, not having a member of the board, I, I think was, was not helpful and, and the committee would benefit. We did have a former member, or we had Mr. Neely on the committee. We had a very good committee, people with good experience. But we didn't particularly draw from schools or from, from certain organizations or a member of the board. Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to mention that based upon my experience in service on other boards and with two major organizations I work, the normal range seems to be five to seven members. The only thing that I would point out about five members is that occasionally someone cannot on a five-member committee participate at certain points in time. And that there's the risk of somebody having to leave the committee altogether for whatever reason, and maybe halfway through or three quarters of the way through. And, and there's a, a cost associated with that in terms of the work of the committee. So I just passed out a line for information purposes for the other members of the select board.
Okay, so, so it sounds like you might be recommending seven rather than five.
I would lean in that direction.
Okay, Mr. Wells.
I, I concur with Mr. Doyle. I lean towards seven as well. And then I was not planning on this, but if, if, if the board determines that you want to have a member sit on it, I would gladly volunteer, given that I am in the unique position of already being on this board now for five years, going into my sixth, but having been a department head for 10 years prior to that. That's not a decision you have to make tonight. I just, I'll be glad to do that if this board determines you want to have a member.
Okay, Mr. Zulus.
And I, I, I'd say the same. I'd be glad to volunteer myself if the, if the board, if the board decides to go in that direction.
Okay, thank you. So we have two volunteers. Anyone else?
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead, Melinda. I apologize.
Madam Chair, I, I do like the idea of having some school representation on. I think probably any member of this board would be happy to serve on, on the the screening committee, my, myself included. But I, I do think that it's important to, to think very carefully about some of the other members and, you know, which staff might be in the best position to help there as well and you know, some, some community members who have maybe held elected office. So I, I, I think that we should, should think pretty carefully about the, the composition. I do think seven is the right number as well.
It sounds like we have broad agreement on seven, I'm hearing. Mr. Wells.
Again, I'm talking a lot tonight. Would, Madam Chair, would it be possible for someone, I, I remember a couple of members of the last 20, and I, I don't, I don't see it for their names. I'm just looking at for the makeup. Would it be possible for us to tomorrow, someone send us who the last committee was? The last election process, just so we can see that, to your point, Ms. Collins, like the diversity of the, you know, who was represented. I, my, you know, who was represented. I my my memory is it was, but maybe if I see it, it might. And then not that I'm necessarily looking would be looking at those people, but the makeup that you referred to, how did we draw out them and where did they come from? I know Mr. Neely was on.
Yeah, Rick Rick Neely was a member. The Chair was Gene Boylan, who has since moved out of town, but Gene had a lot of experience on the library search committees. Mary Reif His, Bob His's wife, who was a Human Resources Executive, Joe Redden, Rob Milt, April Anderson, and Frank Davis, with the with the committee members. The way it was done last time was each member appointed two committees. It was a three-member board. We each had two appointments. And then there was a seventh appointment to make it an odd number. And we did have Mike Gillette, the Town Administrator at Westwood, whom I believe David Burns contacted because he had worked in Westwood. He knew Mike. He brought him in to assist the committee as a sitting Town Administrator in another community. But well, the approach we took that time was different than, say, an approach that might say we we wanted to make sure that we have someone from the Equity and Justice Committee represented or the School Department represented. So it was a different approach to appointing the committee. So it sounds like we've had, we've got some volunteer members from our Board. I I think Ms. Collins is right that probably all of us would be interested in serving. I would, but I also know that I'm stepping off the Board and I probably good to have a continuing member of the Board as at least one of the representatives. And I think we're going to have a lot of work on our plates, working with the interim to be sure that we are moving along all of the things that we need to on on town meeting and budget and bargaining. Mr. Doyle?
Madam Chair, I would just want to second your thought about having somebody from the Diversity and Equity Committee. And also to make sure that we have someone from Town Meeting, a member of the Town Meeting who is not an officer of this of the town and a member of the Select Board.
Well, I should I say is not also a member of the Select Board.
Okay, and and perhaps we may want to have, you know, consider it, like the last time where we had Mary, yes, who was an HR professional, maybe someone in these with some executive HR experience who has participated in other searches and works with a lot of executive recruiting and human resources issues. Does anyone have any thoughts on how we might suggest, say, a town meeting member or a member from the School Department? Not necessarily the department, but the school, the field. It could be a former member, school, former school committee member, a former superintendent. It could be any capacity in which the person could serve. Wouldn't necessarily have to be someone current. Mr. Wells?
So Madam Chair, you just took the whistle. I think maybe if we each send you two names and then go from there and you and perhaps the Vice Chair can look at the diversity and the makeup of it and make recommendations that fill all those goals. I do believe if not the last one, and I believe she served when I was picked in Police T C, although she doesn't live in town anymore. I don't know if you remember. Tracy Golden West, who was the Vice President at Boston College, still is. Woman of color, very articulate, well-spoken HR person there at B C. She doesn't live here anymore, but maybe we could each send you a couple of names and then we can get this done sooner versus later.
Okay, I just want to be sure there's no open meeting law issue with that, Mr. Freitag. If if each member of the Board were to send me potential names, I guess it could be just for inclusion in an agenda where we could talk about them. We could put the name to to have the names to put on an agenda. So there could be a discussion about them. I don't think that would present an issue. Is there any, although Mr. Wells kind of suggested that then maybe Arthur, as the Vice Chair, and I might put forward a slate. I I just want to be sure that we don't have any open meeting law issues with that approach. Maybe it's something we should think about.
Yes, Madam Chair. I'm happy to think about that. I'm sure there's a way to do it and and not want to follow the open meeting law. So if you can give me, you know, tonight, I'll I'll follow up with you tomorrow regarding the process. Best way to do that.
Okay.
Right off the top of my head, it would seem to me that if members of the Board wanted to forward you names, then those names would could, you know, could be discussed at the next meeting. I I think that that would work, but let me follow up with you tomorrow specifically on that issue.
Okay, great. Thank you. That would be helpful. Okay, thank you for that suggestion, Mr. Wells.
Madam Chair, I think we need to tell those people if we're going to do that too.
Exactly, yes.
Because then it becomes a public, it's going to be a public discussion, so.
Yes. Well, and as as Dianne Marie, that's why I wanted to reach out to her to know her availability and whether she didn't be interested before we brought her name up. Okay, then, is there anything else we should talk about on the consultant or the committee?
Nine o'clock, you've got a lot of the agenda.
I know, I know. And we are going to have to make a decision then on Mr. Denny's request for his last day, for the 25th. The next item on our agenda, which I think we should move on to, is just to waive the performance evaluation. Mr. Denny's contract with the town under Article Five does have a performance evaluation each year. We had actually talked about starting that process a couple of weeks ago. So Mr. Denny, he can speak for himself, but he has told me that he'd be he'd be willing to waive that. You know, we Town Council advises that it would be his right to have a review if he wanted one, but given that he's going to be moving on, it probably makes sense not to have everyone spend a lot of time on that. And Mr. Denny, he's willing to waive it. So do we have any discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, if you will accept it. If Mr. Denny's okay with it, that's good. So.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Denny, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, Madam Chair, I will. I will waive that. Thank you for consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I didn't want to jump out unless you, so Madam Chair, I'll make I'll make an I'll make a motion of approval to which, motion for approval to waive the perform performance evaluation under Article Five of the Town Administrator's Appointment.
Second.
Okay. And Arthur, did you have your hand raised for discussion?
No, I was going to make the motion if Richard didn't.
All right.
I'll second his motion.
Okay, then, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
We've lost Mr. Zulus. Ms. Collins?
Nine o'clock.
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Well, he did say that he may have to leave and come back, so.
I didn't hear that. Okay.
Okay, all right, we're on to items nine, 10, and 11 related to the fire station project. I am recused on that matter. So do we need Mr. Well, Mr. Zulus for that? I think we need him for at least part of it. Is that correct, Mr. Denny?
I, yes, yeah, it it would be advised that Mr. Zulus join that conversation.
Want to come back to those, Madam Chair? Want to just keep going?
Yeah, I think we should. All right. So why don't we go on to I see we have Mr. Berkeley here for the Traffic Commission. Why don't we go to item 12, which is the approval of recommendations from the Traffic Commission. We'll move him to panelist. And I'll thank Mr. Mandgold and others who are waiting. Brian Walsh, the Chair of the Fire Station Committee, thank you for your patience. We will get to your items as soon as we can. Good evening, Mr. Berkeley.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members.
So we have recommendations from the Traffic Commission.
Yes, so.
You want to speak to those?
The Traffic Commission last met on January 20th, and as a result of that meeting, we have two recommendations we're asking you to vote on. The first one is for 23 Avalon Road. This is a request by a couple that lives in that home to create a handicap parking space in front of their home. They do have a driveway, but there are access issues in the rear of the property that the driveway is not advantageous to them. So we met discussed on that one and supported their request. And the second one is the intersection of School Street and Canton Street, which, as many of you know, is no stranger to the Traffic Commission. It's been a topic that's come there several times in the past. We've gotten kind of a renewed number of requests from the community about safety in that intersection. So we we took another look at it and there are there have been several accidents in that intersection that that's done two things. One is that these are accidents that are resulting in injury. So it's highlighted the intersection on the state's Highway Safety Improvement Program, which is HSEP, commonly referred to as a crash cluster intersection. So that's now listed as a crash cluster location in town. And the second thing is because there were five accidents that resulted in injury within a one-year period, it now meets the criteria for a multi-way stop sign approach, which has been something that's been requested in previous years and and defeated because Canton Avenue is the dominant traffic. But due to the nature of the number of accidents, we asked our transportation consultant, Data Engineering, to to take another look at it. They did the research on the crashes and they they do believe it warrants at least a trial for a multi-way stop there. The the Westerly approach on Canton Ave is a downhill approach. It's not ideal, but it's not a game changer for this trial. So we we supported the recommendation to make that an always stop for a three- to six-month trial to see if we can help improve the accident frequency there. And those were the two items that we are asking for a vote on. There were other things discussed, which I'm also happy to talk about if you'd like.
Okay, why don't we act on the ones that we're recommending action? So do we have a motion regarding to Avalon Road? If there are no questions, if anyone has a question, please jump in with any question or comment.
I I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations from the Traffic Commission on the recommendations for Avalon Road and for the intersection of School Street and Canton.
Okay, so we're both matters. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, thank you. Mr. Berkeley, yes. Is there anything else that you would like to update us on?
So it probably warrants a little bit of discussion about Spafford Road because I know there was a lengthy petition submitted to your Board that was evaluated and then sent to us. So we did have a lengthy conversation about it, but essentially, none of the.
No, actually, I'm sorry to interrupt you for a moment, Chase. I was just looking at the agenda. We actually, the only things that we listed on the agenda were Avalon Road and School Street and Canton Avenue. So I think what we could I I think what we could do is put these on a few, the other items on a future agenda, just so that we're we don't have any open meeting law issues with. We probably should have. I I didn't catch that. So that's my fault. We we should have included Spafford and the other areas where you've had a discussion, it's not a recommended action. But if you don't mind, we'll postpone it. And why don't we try to coordinate it, say, with a department report on the Public Works Department? So we so we don't have you come in just for that, but to for broader meeting as well.
No problem.
Okay, so so my apologies for that, and we'll we'll take those up at a future meeting. Thank you, Mr. Berkeley.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience tonight. You may be here for number 13 as well, Chase. I just realized this is the solid waste contract, which we discussed previously. We discussed this one previously, some clarifying language added to the contract. Mr. Wells?
No, my, I hit that by mistake, Madam Chair. I apologize.
Okay, did Mr. Berkeley or Mr. Denny wish to speak to this?
Sure, Madam Chair. Thank you. And and Mr. Berkeley, thanks for joining us. There was a question at the last Board meeting on January 26th. We got in this extension. So this is an extension with Sunrise Scavenger, who collects trash, recycling, and yard waste throughout our community to extend their contract for five years. There was a question about Section Three, whether it was a look-back number. Each of those have been clarified. Thank you, Town Council, and Patsy Sprudo from Sunrise Scavenger, who has authorized this document in front of the Board this evening. And essentially, just to go over what we talked about previously, it's a it's a five-year extension on average of 2.5% increase annually, starting at 1.5% on July 1st of the coming of this this calendar year and riding through as the as the contract reads through June 30th of 2027. So very happy again with all the work that they're providing service in the town. They don't skip a beat. 30 inches of snow, 90-degree humid weather. They do great work for the town. Very responsive. If something is missed, then they need to go back for it. So, Mr. Berkeley, if you want to add any other commentary, but this is to clarify that Section Three that was was questioned by Members Zulus, Secretary Zulus, and Member Collins the last time we spoke.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. Does anyone have any questions? And if not, would anyone like to offer a motion?
Madam Chair, I I will move to approve the first amendment to the contract between the Town of Milton, Massachusetts and our model waste M A L L C, doing business as Sunrise Scavenger, and to authorize the Town Administrator to sign on the Board's behalf.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? And all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells, you're on mute. Mr. Wells, we, you're on mute. We didn't hear you. This is the vote on the Sunrise Scavenger contract?
Is that me, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yes, I mean, yes, sorry, I apologize.
Okay, and myself, yes. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it.
I think we should move on to item 14, which is the Diversity and Equity, or the Equity and Justice for Health, excuse me, Committee. Chase Berkeley, thank you very much for joining us this evening. I appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night. So if we could move, let's see, I believe we have Pat Lattimore. Do we have anyone else from the committee? I don't think so. Why don't we move Pat Lattimore up to be a panelist?
Madam Chair, as I do that, I did see Chris Hart here earlier. I don't see Chris anymore.
Okay. Okay, if we see him come back into the attendee group early, move him in.
Yeah, I didn't hear, Madam Chair, Chris Hart was joining us. He was on the call. Unfortunately, he's had a bit of a family emergency.
Okay. Okay, thank you for letting us know. Okay, so we have three items to discuss tonight. The first is approval of a contract with, we've already discussed in a prior meeting with K L Scott and Associates LLC. This is relating to consulting services. I believe everyone's had a chance to re, Town Council's had an opportunity to review and comment on the contract. It's been signed by K L Scott and Associates. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Or would Ms. Lattimore or Mr. Denny like to provide any additional information?
I'll make a chair, I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, to approve the contract, just for the purpose of discussion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I get it.
Any discussion?
Does does Miss Lattimore have any additional comments that she wants to make before we vote?
No, I don't have any additional comments. I I haven't seen the contract, but I knew that it was in process and and was being reviewed by Town Council, so.
Mr. Freitag?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually haven't seen the executed copy of the contract from K L Associates either. We sent them our revisions along with our typical contract language last week, and we were told that they were reviewing it. And as of this morning, when I spoke with Mike Denny, we had not yet received an executed copy from K L Scott Associates.
I believe that came in late this afternoon. Mr. Denny?
Yeah, apologies, Town Council. That that was received by Mike Kelly late this afternoon, signed by K L Scott. Okay, so thank you for for all your work on that. We really appreciate it. Executed contract was submitted to Chief Procurement Officer this afternoon.
And just to be.
No, go ahead. My question was to you, Kevin. I was going to say, do you want me to amend my motion at all, to allow for any comments from Town Council?
Well, I had a question just for the the Chair, which was I of Mike Denny through the Chair, which was just to ask whether or not there had been any changes or edits to what we had sent along to K L Scott Associates.
No changes. Okay. You did great work.
All right, so we'll get a signed copy of it over to you, Kevin. Apologies for that. It was very late after. It was around 5:00, I think, when it came in. So Mr. Denny told me about that at the very end of the day, so hot off the presses. Okay, then, if we have, we've already discussed this at some length at a prior meeting. If we have no other discussion, then we'll go to a vote. Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, thank you all. Next is the draft of a policy. We're going to have a first reading of the policy this evening. Find a copy of it here. When we move things around the agenda, paper is out of order. Okay, did anyone, I know Ms. Collins has had some involvement in this. Is there anything that you would like to speak to, Ms. Collins or Ms. Lattimore, before anyone asks any question?
I would say to Ms. Collins, who's actually had him, I've been working with Chris Hart on this for a number of weeks, as well as Mr. Zulus, who's not here.
Yeah, he actually sent me a message. He's going to be coming back about 9:30. Is there a reason we should wait for him on this one? Or can we go ahead, Ms. Collins?
You know, I I don't know how he would feel about us going ahead without him because I haven't spoken with him about it. I I would say that Mr. Hart did a lot of work on this and, you know, he, he may have looked around, but he really wrote a good deal of it, I believe, from whole cloth, and I really just provided some clarifying questions, more than anything else, and, and a few points. So I, I think it's, it's an excellent start, and it covers a lot of bases. I'm eager to see what the rest of the board thinks, thinks of it, because, you know, there, there are things in here that seem as if they'll, they'll work very well to me, but it's always better to have five or, or six. You know, people talking about the particular points in this. You know, for instance, I, just to, just to look at page six, talking about the, just, the Complaints Administrator. You know, there are some very practical things that could be very helpful, but also you know, there may be more than one way to handle those things, or, or it would be good to know if there are potential difficulties in some of the things that are proposed, in case there, there are alternative ways to get similar effects. So it's, as I said, I'm not sure if Mr. Zulus feels, you know, would feel okay about us just going ahead, but we will have a second reading.
Yes.
I, I just, I don't, I don't know what kind of comments he made, and, and, you know, what the resulting changes were, so I can't share that with you.
Okay, I, I see Karen Praval, our Finance Director, is in the attendee group with her hand raised. Could we move her over to panelist? Please, thank you. In the meantime, Mr. Wells, your hand is raised also.
I'm glad you brought Karen over. So in my reading of this, much of, like, a lot of I just want to make sure, like, Karen's seen it, Mike Kelly, a lot of things about procurement and bidding, a lot of this language already exists. Because as a municipality, we do a lot of collaborative bidding. We buy off state contracts, collaborative contracts. A lot of this type language is already written into those on the state level and on the, and on the regional level, so. I take it, I bet a hundred dollars that Karen's already read all this. And this, and my second question to Ms. Collins' point, just about the complaint administration, is this someone that would be a full-time position? Because I just don't, was this a job that would be assigned? It was like a secondary assignment to someone who's already employed? I guess, I guess I'm asking this to Ms. Lattimore, because.
Oh, yes, and I have my hand raised on that as response to a couple of things. So to, Mr. Wells, in response to your question, we think that this would not be a full-time job. We assume that there would not be a lot of complaints, first of all, but that what was needed is a place to go, because what we heard from residents is that if they have a complaint, which most of them are resolved with the department, that, that there is a complaint about, you know, about. However, on the rare occasion, you do have a complaint that rises above the department, and people feel, and residents have indicated to us that they felt uncomfortable, you know, taking that kind of a complaint to the department head, for example, because sometimes it might be about the department head. What it reminds me of is in private industry, you have a chief ethics officer a lot of times, and that chief ethics officer many times is your human resource professional, and that person, for certain complaints, report outside of their normal reporting line, and so they may report directly, say, to you around those types of complaints that rise above the, the department, that the departments cannot handle, or, or about the departments. I, it's our expectation that we will not have a lot of those, but that there should be a mechanism for the town to address them.
I agree with you on both points. Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you. And I'm sorry, Karen, I cut you off.
Thank you, Mr. Praval.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, you know, in terms of the finances, I know that we have the money in the FY twenty-two budget to fund the contract with K L Scott, and I just wanted to understand that this is an assessment. I want everyone to understand that the proposal that they're putting forward is an assessment. Once they're able to assess the town in terms of how they feel we need to move forward, there's additional cost involved in terms of then putting together training programs, putting together different materials, and continuing this until the next fiscal year. So I want to make sure that as you're committing to this contract being signed and assessment being done, that we're also committing to future years of funding and where that's going to come from, and making sure that it's part of the budget.
Okay, thank you. And that's with respect to the K L Scott contract, and which we, we actually just, we did just vote that. So we're, we're now, we're talking about the policy, but, but your, your point is relevant, because the policy does talk about training and other issues that would have some cost associated with them. So they, they all, all the pieces relate together here. Mr., so thank you for that, Ms. Praval. Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two things, if I may. First, I'd like to hear from the Town Administrator with respect to his review and position at this particular point in time. And secondly, the Town Moderator is cited in a number of instances, and I'd be very interested in knowing whether or not the Town Moderator has, has an opportunity for input and then review of the, the draft that we have before us.
Mr. Vice Chair, yeah, I, I'm in total agreement. I spent most of my time working with the D E I consultant stuff. Haven't had a, a deep look into this policy stuff. Obviously, this stuff is, is going to land on the desk of the Town Administrator, so it, this is very important stuff, so. And to answer your second question, I don't believe the Town Moderator, I, I haven't forwarded this on to the Town Moderator. I'm not sure if, if if members of Equity and Social Justice Committee have.
It's, Ms. Collins or Mr. Zulus may know the answer to that question. Mr. Zulus is not here yet, but.
I, well, Ms. Lattimore may be able to tell us. I thought that I, I thought that Mr. Hart said that, that the Town Moderator had received a copy of this.
Yeah, I, it was my understanding that the Town Administrator, the Town Moderator has received a copy of it, just for review purposes, but I would like to confirm that with Mr. Hart.
Okay, and, and this is a first reading, so we can have this on a future agenda. So we'll want to make sure the moderator, the Police and Fire Departments are also listed, so I want to be sure that the chiefs have also seen the policy to know what their responsibilities would be under it if it's adopted. So Moderator, Police, Fire, and why don't we go through again and just see if there's anyone else here who would have some responsibilities placed upon them, just to be sure that we've, we've brought this to their attention, and we see if there's any, any issues. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure that we send this to all of them for their call, just to make sure, just, you know, one more, because this is a lot. It's comprehensive policy. I think that particularly Police, Fire, Moderator, who else? Procurement Officer, Karen's clearly up to date on this already, but those, those department heads and respective departments get to have some way in on this.
Yeah, right on the first page too, we have Town Clerk, Library, referenced, and other elected boards. So we'd want to make sure we circulate it for any comment to the other committees and departments. Okay, that's a good, good point. Okay, and anyone else? Anything on this policy for the first reading? Ms. Lattimore or Ms. Praval, anything that you would like to add? Mr. Wells, your hand is up.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, no, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Just the way the light, I couldn't even see it.
Now, Ms. Collins' hand is raised. Ms. Collins?
Oh, Madam Chair, do we need to waive the, the actual reading of this?
I don't know. We haven't actually, I don't think we did that with the other policies when we took them on.
Passed, okay.
A town meeting, I know a town meeting, there's, that's done, but I don't think we have to. Mr. Doyle?
Madam Chair, with the understandings that have been voiced during this discussion, I would move to refer the D E I policy as amended to the second reading.
Second.
Okay, all right. Any discussion on that? Which I, I think would be scheduled for, say, the, possibly the twenty-third at the earliest. We may even want to move to early March, depending on how quickly we can get it to the other boards and committees and turn it around. Okay, any, if no discussion, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, thank you all. So we'll take this back up on a future agenda. And then, fourteen C is the charge to the committee. I, I think we have an early draft of that in our materials this evening, not the actual final copy. But the, the thought at the prior meeting was to base the charge to a new standing committee based upon the existing charge, including the, the membership composition and size.
Madam Chair, are you looking for a motion for approval on this tonight?
Well, I, I think because the final version is not in the materials, we probably shouldn't vote it, and we should, we should probably get the final version of the charge, and then see whether anyone has any comments, and I, I think this might be something to defer to, to Mr. Zulus' back, or at a future meeting, because he did, he did a lot of the work putting this together, so I want to be sure we have the final version, and, and see whether there are any comments. And Ms. Lattimore, did the committee have any change, any comments on, or any changes that the committee would like to make?
Because screen just froze, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I think so, okay.
Oh, she's back.
Is there anything you wanted to add, Ms. Lattimore, on the charge for the committee? I'm sorry, you're.
Sorry. The only thing I would add to it is that the committee had a pretty good discussion about the charter at a previous meeting for the next, the permanent standing committee, and we felt that the charge that we had was sufficient, because it really did provide us with what we thought was necessary access to town officials, and also had us, you know, had the, the residents of town understanding kind of what our purview was. And so I think that by keeping it as consistent as possible, that that's an important piece that the committee would like to see.
Okay. Okay, if no one has anything else, I think this is something we should defer to our next meeting until we have the final version before us.
I agree.
Okay, then, then thank you very much, Ms. Lattimore. I appreciate your time and your waiting this evening.
Thank you.
If Steve Mangold and Brian Walsh are both here.
They are.
You could probably go back to that. I, I think we could do that without Mr. Zulus, as long as the training man goes, yeah.
Okay, I, I, yeah, I think what we should, so I'm, I'm going to ask to be moved over to the attendee group, because part of this is going to be an executive session, and I want to be sure I'm in the attendee group, and then I come back with the attendees. Mr. Freitag? Yes?
Yeah, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, as you know, I'm conflicted on that matter, so if I could be moved into the attendees, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, so why don't we ask Mr. Dennehy, if he would move, or someone would move both Mr. Freitag and myself to the attendee group. I will be recused on nine through eleven, and I'm going to ask Mr. Doyle to chair, and when Mr. Zulus comes back, you'll just need to be careful that you get him into the executive session. Thank you all.
I'm, I'm.
See you in a little while. Yeah.
I'm, I'm moving Steve Mangold over now. Unfortunately, I, I have to ask all the attendees to leave, so that I can lock the room for the panelists.
Okay.
Ask that they, they come back in. It's, it's just, it's one of the quirks of working with the Zoom is, is I see Mr. Mangold here.
So for anyone, so we do have a few in the attendee groups, so I guess what we would need to, do we have an estimate, do you think, on how long this might take?
Mr. Mangold, any idea how, how long this would take before we can get back into the public session?
For the executive session, ten minutes?
Okay.
Okay, so why don't we ask, so I, myself and others will come back in in about ten minutes, and I guess at that point, we'll know whether we can, can get in or not, but people could also watch on Channel Eight and see when the, the coverage comes back on. All right, thank you all. See you in a little while.
Thank you. We are now back in public session, and Agenda Item Number Nine, Discussion Approval, Two Amendments to the Contract Between the Vertex Companies Incorporated and the Town of Milton for Owners Project Manager Services Related to the Fire Station Building Project. Mr. Wallace?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
This is a, I believe we've discussed this previously with, with members and council. This is a standard approach with us. We have, we have broken up the work, the Vertex, which is our our owner's project manager, and what's before you is, is a a proposal for an amendment to their contract that is within our budget, and I must tell you that we have all along been happy with the architect, and we are just absolutely thrilled with Vertex acting as our new owner's project manager. It's, they've been just absolutely terrific. That I can tell you to remember, every member of my committee has spoken to me individually about how happy they are with their work.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Is there a motion to be made?
Mr. Vice Chair, I'll move to approve two amendments to the contract between the Vertex Companies, Inc. and the Town of Milton for Owners Project Manager Services related to the Fire Station Buildings Project.
Sir, Ms. Collins is second, Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Um, Mr. Williams, thank you. If I could just note, I know that we did speak about this before, but that, that the First Amendment includes a construction cost estimate for the amount of eleven point five thousand dollars, and it's, it was not included in the original contract for the O P M services, and then the Second Amendment is for the construction administration and closeout in the amount of nine hundred and fifty-four. Sorry, yes, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand, I couldn't read my writing, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Just, just so we have that for the minutes. Thank you.
Very appropriate. Thank you, Ms. Collins. Any further discussion? We'll take the roll call. Ms. Collins?
Mr. Freitag has his hand up.
I'm sorry. We have a hand? I can't. Okay.
Mr. Chair, thank you, or Vice Chair, I just wanted to bring you to your attention. I believe I request perhaps that someone consider amending that motion to, including authorizing Mike Dennehy to sign the contract on behalf of the select board, please.
Ms. Collins, would that be acceptable to you?
Yes, I'll, I'll make that friendly amendment for myself. I don't know if Town Council can do that.
And Mr. Wells, you agree? Is second?
I, I do.
Thank you. Any further comment? Harry Dunn? Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
I see Mr. Zulus is back for this. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes, thank you very much. Great to see you again, Mike.
Good to be back.
Hope it was a good event.
It was, it was very good.
Excellent. We turn now to Agenda Item Eleven. Discussion Approval Purchase of four thirty-two Adams Street. And we have a revised motion.
No, that was executive session, wasn't it?
I think I'd make a, I think I'll make a revised motion, I think is what I would do on this.
I agree. Exactly. Exactly. Let's see, Jackson. Does anybody wish to? Interesting, comments, or? Anybody else at this time?
I think I just make, I think I'm going to make a motion for you, Mr. Vice Chair, if that's all right.
Please, I enjoy that.
So I'll make a motion for approval on the purchase of 432 Adams Street on buyer's representation certificate. Settlement agreement. And the court claim deed. Did I get that right, Ms. Collins?
Correct. Is it agreeable with Steve Mangold, too? Steve reaffirms that. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Ms. Collins? Any further discussion? Harry Dunn? Roll call, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. And now we can redefine our chair back to the meeting, I believe.
Thank you all. Good night.
Brian, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Steve.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you. I came back in through public meetings on the town website, so I'm not able to change my name. I don't know if there's any way Lynn can help me with that, but okay, well, this, this is, everything seems to be coming up differently. There we are, gallery, gallery view.
Maybe co-host. I'll fix your name, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, so thank you all. I think that means we're back on to Item 15, which is the ARPA recommendations from the Finance Committee. Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Finance Committee met on Friday, February, actually, it was February 4th, Friday, February 4th. And has two recommendations for the Select Board. First, the first recommendation from the Finance Committee is that the Select Board appropriate, appropriate up to $210,000 from the Norfolk County provided ARPA funding to the Milton Police Department to hire a full-time mental health clinician for fiscal year 2023 and fiscal year 2024. This request originated with the police chief, Chief King, and the chief came into our meetings, I believe on two, perhaps three occasions, at least two occasions, and talked about the, the additional mental health needs for the calls of the fire department and the needs of the department to address mental health issues with the residents that they serve. We discussed a couple of different options, including a, including a contractor. But at the end of the day, it was the view of the Finance Committee, and Arthur can chime in, that the best case, best course was to go down the route of a full-time mental health professional who could be supervised directly by the Police Department and participate directly with the Police Department. The cost was, the breakdown of the cost was the $210,000, the breakdown was, the estimate for salary was 70 to $85,000 for fiscal year. And we went with the higher end of the estimate because of the need here and the competition for those kinds of professionals. And we included $20,000 for benefits, for a total of $105,000 per fiscal year, for a total of $210,000.
It's an obfuscation, Mr. Chair, and I would recommend, I would move that the Select Board appropriate up to 210,000 from county provided ARPA funding to the Milton Police Department to hire a full-time mental health clinician for fiscal years 2023 and 2024.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Then all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, the second recommendation. And, and I want to make sure we have this right, because there may have been a different memory about the, where this would come from, but I, but I believe our recommendation, our vote, was to recommend that the Select Board appropriate up to $27,000 of county provided, and I believe it was county provided because of the, at this, at this time, the dearth of town direct town funding, but, but we can, we can focus on that, but county provided ARPA funding to the Milton Cemetery to produce a 48-unit columbarium for cremation interments. This was a request that originated with the superintendent of the cemetery, Ms. Ahern. And she pointed out that the last two years, unfortunately, 2020, 2021, there have been a total of 41 cremation interments related to COVID. And there, there may well have been more. That's the number that she could, she could, she could identify. Currently, there is, they only have 103 remaining available spaces. And so they have the need, they have a need that has been driven by COVID. The, the initial request was for three 48 space units, which would be a total of 144 units for $80,000 approximately. The Finance Committee's view, I think, was that at this time, we think moving forward with the 48 space unit, 48 space unit columbarium would be sufficient, and Ms. Ahern, Ms. Ahern thought that was the case as well. If things continue to go go in a different direction, as there is more need, we can always address it in the future. And so, so Arthur, you can fill in, and I know there may be a difference memory on whether we should do it by the county and, and the county or the, or the town, and we can, I think, figure that out here, in terms of where it comes from.
I think we can do that and work with the motion. Accordingly, my recollection was that because we had truncated the original request to a smaller amount of money, that rather than go to the county, which we would have done for a larger amount of money, with federal direct funding coming with the new fiscal year, that we would include $27,000 in the direct federal funds. If that's agreeable to you.
Yeah, it was, I, you know, I'm, I'm certainly agnostic on where it comes from. It really, really, you know, I, I, I think we go with the recommendation from Mr. Dennehy and Ms. Praval in terms of where it fits best, and if it fits best with the town, then I think that makes sense.
And I don't think there was a timing imperative on the part of Lisa, if I remember correctly.
All right. Do we have a motion, or did anyone, I thought I just saw a quick hand and I lost it.
I was going to make a motion, Madam Chair, but I saw Mike Dennehy put his hand up.
Mike Dennehy, did you want to add something, Mr. Dennehy?
Very briefly, we got notification from Norfolk County that our ARPA funding, which was currently set at 25% of our total allotment of $5.354 million, would be increased to 50%. So we do appreciate that, and that's something we could take advantage of. It was a notice that, that I forwarded late last week, and we didn't get a chance to talk about because of the storm, so. With respect to this request, we, we can figure out the funding source. I know the US Treasury is due to send us more money. I don't know the exact date, but just know that, that we've been allowed to increase our Norfolk County grant application funding to 50% of that total.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to approve the Finance Committee's recommendation for the Milton Cemetery in the amount of 48,000 even, Michael, is that correct? 48,000 even?
27,000.
27, oh. I'm just kidding. 27, 27,000 dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act funding, also known as ARPA.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, we definitely have to 10 o'clock, Madam Chair.
And myself, yes.
Got to sort us 48,000.
Well, it was 48 units, so I think you had 48 in mind for a reason. Okay, so it's unanimous. Thank you to the Finance Committee for those recommendations. Next item is the budget. I don't, I, Ms. Praval has not come back in, so I don't know whether she was planning to be here or not, or whether Mr. Dennehy wanted to speak to this, and if there is any update from the Finance Committee or Mr. Dennehy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very quickly, and I'll turn it over to Secretary Zulus or Vice Chair Doyle. That, that process continues this evening simultaneously to this board's meeting. Chief King, Director, DPW Director Chase Berkeley, and Building Commissioner Joe Prondak presented their budgets to the Warren Committee. And we have a list of, of other town and board committee assignments going to the Warren Committee next week and their following meeting, so. The, the progress is ongoing. There's a meeting Friday morning again. Finance Committee seems to be a regular Friday morning meeting. Set it and forget it. But yeah, it, it, it's an ongoing process. Ms. Praval will enlighten the Finance Committees on, on Friday with respect to any, any updates that she can provide, so.
Okay, and it's getting late, so unless there's anything pressing that anyone wants to add for this, I think we can defer it to a future item, future agenda. Okay, thank you, everyone. Item 18, or 17. Mr. Zulus asked that we put on an update regarding the Adams Street MBTA station stairs and the status of repair or disrepair. So why don't I turn it over to Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this has been a, a, a problem that has been long unaddressed by the MBTA, the Department of Transportation, and certainly the, the current administration for the last seven years. As, as anyone down, anyone in Milton knows, the Milton Station at Adams Street has been closed for quite some time. The reason it is closed is that there is a staircase leading to that station, or the staircase is closed, that is a safety hazard, and it is a blight on our community, and it is an eyesore. And that has been the case for many years, certainly the last seven years. There have been many efforts over the last few years to try to get the MBTA and the Department of Transportation and the current administration to move on this. And those efforts have fallen on deaf, deaf ears. Back in October of 2019, Representative Driscoll and then Representative Cullenade requested that the staircase be repaired and that the station, and be, and be reopened. They sent a letter to that effect. In the following January of 2020, State Senator Timblety and Mr. Dennehy and myself met with the head of the MBTA, Mr. Poftak, and showed him pictures of the disrepair of the staircase and requested that that be repaired and reopened as soon as possible. That has been followed up on over the last year by Senator Timblety's office and Mr. Dennehy's office, and nothing has happened. The stairs remain in disrepair. The stairs remain a safety hazard. The stairs remain a blight on our community. And so this board instructed Town Council to demand that those that staircase be repaired and reopened immediately to remedy this detriment to the Milton residents and the Dorchester residents, who are, who are, whose, whose travel is compromised by the condition of the staircase. And that letter was sent to Mr. Poftak by Town Council, Mr. Freitag, on December 22nd. As I understand, there has been no response, just as there has been no action for certainly the seven years of this administration and years before that. It is hard to conclude that this is anything less than a management failure on the part of the MBTA and the Department of Transportation in this administration. And the lack of response to state elected officials and to our municipal officials also bespeaks in arrogance on the part of the MBTA and the Department of Transportation and the administration. And we have made this demand. No action has been taken. And it seems to me that we need to reconsider this in executive session and consider our legal options against the state with respect to their inaction on this safety hazard and this blight on our community. Unfortunately, this is not an isolated occurrence. We see the same story. We see the same movie currently playing in another part of our town, in East Milton, where the Department of Transportation and this administration continue not to move forward with a project, the rebuilding the East Milton Deck that had been back in July of 2020. It was, it was promised to us, it was, we were told that that project, the first, first three phases of that project would be completed by November of 2020 with an outside date of January 4th, 2021. It still hasn't happened over a year later. We were told that that project would be fully complete by May of 2021. So that project is over a year late, and we all know that the, the problems in that community. So, again, this, this story of management failure and, and, and arrogance on the part of, of the Department of Transportation and this administration is, is leading to a lot of problems on different parts of our town. And we need to, we need to do our best to take any action we can. We've tried talking, we've tried asking, we've tried to move the ball forward, and nothing has happened. And so we need to, it seems to me we need to talk about taking additional action on this.
Okay, is there anything else anyone wishes to speak to on this item? Then if not, it's getting late, so I think we still have a number of items on the agenda, so I think we should move on to the next item. Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Special Town Meeting, we we're in the process of putting the warrant together for the March 14th Special Town Meeting. Warren Committee still, they, they were meeting this evening. They are still working on their report and some of their comments to the articles. We, the, we do not yet have the legislation signed by the governor for the remote town meetings to be able to go, occur going forward. So we're waiting to hear on that. We're expecting that very shortly. This is something that I think we could take up at our meeting on Tuesday, the 15th, to prove the warrant in final form, which we should have at that point. There is going to be a small group proofing the warrant tomorrow with the Warren Committee clerk. So I think we'll have it in pretty good shape. We did, last night, the Planning Board had a public hearing on their accessory dwelling unit article, and there was a typo. I forwarded, which I just forwarded during the meeting, an email that came over from the Chair of the Planning Board, Denny Swenson, regarding a revised version to correct a typo in the accessory dwelling unit article. So I think we should make sure that that is the version that is in the warrant, so if we, if someone would move to substitute the article we received this afternoon for the version that is in the warrant, we had previously, and we've previously substituted articles, we had told the Planning Board, we would make sure that their final version got into the warrant. So do we have a motion to substitute the latest version?
I'll make that, I'll make that motion, Madam Chair, to substitute that article with the latest version to include any typographical changes. This has been submitted to our board by the Planning Board Chair.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, so we'll add, if everyone's in agreement, we'll add to Tuesday's Agenda Approval of the Warrant. Then moving on to, unless there's anything else from, Mr. Freitag will give me the sign if he thinks there's anything else we need to add. Move on to Article 19, Item 19, which is the annual town meeting. I don't know that there's anything anyone would like to discuss. We want to leave this as a standing item on our agendas throughout the spring in case there's anything relating to the annual town meeting articles, which I'm sure there will be at some point. I'm not sure we have anything this evening.
I know it's not, I know that's not a motion, but I'll second that.
That we'll have it on as a standing agenda item, okay?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right, then, item 20 is an appointment of Meredith Hall to the Open Space and Recreation Planning Committee. She's the Planning Board designated to this committee.
Madam Chair, I'll make, I move to appoint Meredith Hall to a three-year term in the Open Space and Recreation Planning Committee.
Any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The next two items is the exact same item, but on the public agenda, it was repeated twice, so it's intended obviously to be one item. This is a request from the Municipal Broadband Committee for a $5,000 payment from the Cable Access Fund. And I don't know if there's any time sensitivity here. I don't think Town Council's had an opportunity yet to review this, is my understanding. Mr. Zulus to the committee, is there some time sensitivity here that we couldn't take this up on Tuesday night if necessary?
Tuesday nights probably found there is some time sensitivity because we are trying to get an RFP prepared. And the, the vote of the Municipal Broadband Committee was to seek the assistance of a network design engineer to make sure we get the RFP right. And that's the kind of expertise we don't have and in town. And so, and there are a couple of, there are some, there is that expertise out there. And, and so the idea was if we could for short money get a network design engineer to make sure we're, we have all our Ts crossed and Is dotted on our RFP, that will benefit us going forward. And the thought was that since we have $350,000 appropriated by town meeting from the cable fund for design and engineer, design and construction of a municipal broadband, or a, I'm sorry, a fiber network, municipal fiber network, that, that we could use $5,000 from that for the purpose of a network design engineer to help with the RFP. That's the thought.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Doyle?
With Mr. Zulus' explanation, I would move to approve the recommendation of the Municipal Broadband Committee to accept a $5,000 payment from the Cable Television Access Fund for a consultant to assist with the issuance of a request for proposals.
Okay, I believe Town Council wanted time to take a look at this, so let me just ask Kevin whether the explanation you heard from Mr. Zulus was sufficient. We wanted to be sure that the purpose is sufficient for the money that's being held in the Cable Access Fund.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That sounds like it would be permissible. I would just suggest if it's possible to hold off until Tuesday, I'm supposed to have a phone call with the Town Administrator of another town that actually just recently completed a municipal broadband project. And if I can just line up what they did with what we're trying to do, that might be good information to have before the board votes on Tuesday night.
Madam Chairman, I will withdraw the motion.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Doyle. I appreciate that. Okay, so I think that information, at least having Mr. Zulus describe it, has been helpful to Mr. Freitag. And Kevin, feel free to stay with us. I don't know if there's anything else on the agenda that you were planning or needed to be here for, but I'll leave that up to you. Thank you for your help this evening.
I don't think so, Madam Chair. I'm going to say goodnight.
All right, goodnight. Thank you. Item 22, or Acceptance of a Charitable Contribution to the Substance Abuse Coalition, now known as the Coalition.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the charitable contribution of $1,000 from Girl Scout Troop 76176 to the Health Department for the Milton Coalition's Milton Minds Matter Program.
Very generous donation. Do we have a second?
Second. Sorry, Madam Chair.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The next item are Mark Williams, Director of Emergency Management, has submitted a letter of retirement to us, stepping down from being Emergency Management Director of the MEMA organization. And he's provided a lot of volunteer service to the town. So when I saw this, it took me back to a lot of the times when he was in, appearing before the Warren Committee many years ago about the MEMA budget. And I know he's served for a long time, so thank you to Mark Williams for his dedicated volunteer service to the town. Mr. Dennehy, is there anything you would like to add to this, or Mr. Wells? It's a police, auxiliary police, but police-related position.
No, I would, I'll turn it over to Mr. Wells, but very.
Go ahead, Michael, yeah.
You still meet, see Mr. Williams out on Center Street directing track, traffic every day in our community, and I just want to thank him for all of his time here. It's only five years that I spent with him, and Mr. Wells spent a lot more with him, but thank you, Mr. Williams.
I think he was, I think I was in high school after. He was chasing him out on Andrews Field when he first doing the auxiliary police 50 years ago. But yes, Mark has dedicated much of his life and service both many, many years in the auxiliary police and in the last, I think, 10 years as the, 10 or 15 years as the MEMA Director. And to Mr. Dennehy's point, those of you who don't know, he is a full-time Public Safety Officer at North Academy, which, where he's been now for, I think, over 20 years, and that's why you see him on Center. He's a visible presence on Center Street. So many thanks for your, for your time and your service, Mark. You donate a lot of hours of your life to this community.
So it sounds as though this is a position that will need to be filled at some point, but, and there may be plans in place for that. But tonight, this is just to notify the public that Mr. Williams is resigning and thanking for service, and we have a motion to accept his resignation as Director of Emergency Management.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, if there's any, is there any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And Ms. Collins? And myself, yes. Okay, thank you. Town Administrator's Report. I don't think we've skipped over anything else on the agenda. I think we have everything up till this point.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Very quickly, so on January 28, the Department of Public Utilities, the state agency, sent us, sent the town a notice of filing public hearings and procedural conference, DPU 2222, which we will post at several locations at Town Hall. Essentially, what this is, is, is NSTAR has submitted a rate hike to the Department of Public Utilities for its residential and commercial customers. There will be two Zoom hearings for the public to video conference in on March 29, 2022, beginning at 10:00 a.m., and March 31, 2022, beginning at 6:00 p.m., which Milton residents may want to attend. Again, we will post this on the town's website as we have done other public utility notifications. This is an opportunity for the public to take, take part in the evidentiary hearing that the Department of Public Utility hosts. It's my understanding that the Attorney General has committed significant funding in excess of $500,000 to investigate this proposed rate hike. The other agenda item I have tonight, and I will certainly pass this off to Mr. Wells, is I neglected to acknowledge Milton Police Officer Jack Richmond, who recently retired from the force. Very quickly, he was, he was an officer for 39 and a half years, promoted to Sergeant in 1999, 1993, excuse me. And just, he, he oversaw everything from specialized firearms to training. He did live shooter training in the cellar of Town Hall for us several times, very coordinated efforts with the Milton Public Schools. But I want, I want to personally thank Mr. Richmond for all his service and congratulate him on a nice retirement, and I will turn it over to Chief Wells.
Richard, you're on mute.
It's the bewitching hour, or after the bewitching. I'll just be brief. We've talked a lot tonight. Strew Sergeant Richmond did retire on Monday after a, a very long career. He grew up his whole life here, graduated Milton High School, went to Marine Corps, went to college. He was actually a police officer in Holland. Came, we came on the same year together, a month apart. But to Michael's point, he is a leader in the, not just the region, the Commonwealth, on workplace violence, school violence, all types of. He, he's already out teaching today. He was in Springfield yesterday teaching. He's done immense work for the Milton Public Schools, for the kids of our town, all of our buildings. He's one of only two police officers that I ever knew, have known of, of Jewish faith. And he clearly has followed anti-Semitic violence very closely in his life and has really spoken out and done a ton to really prepare, as I say, everything from religious to school. It's a huge void for Chief King to fill, losing someone of that, that caliber. I wish him the best. He's really, he's done an unbelievable job, and he was a great partner. We were partners for a long time. We came on. And I wish him the best. He's a good man. So thank you for that, Michael, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Mr. Dennehy. Under the Chair's report, I put on just an update on a couple of things in a potential letter to consider submitting to the Board of Appeals. First, regarding the animal shelter, Ms. Collins and I have been attending the recent meetings of the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee. And just to let the board know, the committee has been, started the process of looking into potentially modular construction for the shelter that would be a much reduced cost. The Animal Control Officer and the Animal League have let us know that they would have some concerns about a much reduced size of the building. So there's some follow-up being done. George Tugayus and John Sheldon, the two architects on the committee, have been heading up the, the queries into the modular construction. The role of the, the office, the, what is it, the OPM, the project manager, going forward is a little bit unclear. So there's some follow-up going on because there were questions as to whether there would be a need for a project manager if it's modular construction. There still is some site work, so that, that was being looked into. And we're trying to determine through the procurement officer whether we can get any information as to the site preparation costs to see whether that might be something that the town could assist with. So the committee is working hard to try to come to a solution. And I'll ask Ms. Collins if she'd like to add anything, knowing she's been out there recently to see the shelter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I was there today and met with Therese Desmond and Officer Nancy Bersani. And I took pictures and I'll write up a little memo to, and I'll send it to Town Administrator Dennehy to share with everyone. But, but Therese invited anybody, actually, who would like to go. She'd go up and, and take a look around because it was anticipated that costs could be reduced by reducing the size of the building. But if you go there and you see places that animals are supposed to be, are filled to bursting with, with the things that they need just to run the shelter. And on top of that, there are sheds. There's a container that's supposed to be Nancy's office that is also filled with, with various things, including a freezer for, you know, animals that need to be kept because they've died. So she, she has no desk space. It's really, it's really in such terrible condition. So whatever we can do to, to try to, you know, get this resolved would, would be great. I hope that, as, as Chair Conlon said, the modular construction is, is something that the two architects are, are looking at. So I will share those pictures and a memo of information that Nancy Bersani shared with us.
That would be helpful to see, and, and, you know, I know, obviously, everyone's concerned about the animals, but we have volunteers working there, and we have a town employee, Nancy Bersani, who's incredibly dedicated and does wonderful work and does not have wonderful working conditions or even adequate working conditions. So I'm almost as interested in moving this project, not only to fulfill our obligation to the dogs and these stray cats and the stray animals, the dog pound, but also for the volunteers and the Animal Control Officer, works with the Police Department, to, to get a better facility for them to be working out of.
Right. If I could add one thing, it's difficult to attract new volunteers without a facility to really accommodate them. And at this point, there are prey and predators in the same area together. You know, it's a very stressful situation, you know, for people to go in and see animals like that. So also difficult to attract new, new volunteers.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Mr. Wells?
No, there's just one point, and you're correct. I'm there. I was there last week again. You wouldn't, I was saying you wouldn't keep your own dog there. Never mind anyone else's dog, but it's just. On the Capitol Committee, we have had, Bill Ritchie has talked a little bit. We have had some preliminary. So even though we haven't voted to come to the full ball of the recommendation, if you think the town's going to put any money towards site prep this year, if that's a decision they could make sooner versus later, I think we might be open to hearing that this year. So I'll leave that to both of you, but we are, we have anticipated the possibility that that could come forward this year, so.
Did you say, Richard, you talked to Therese Desmond about that?
I've talked to Therese about it, and I've also talked to Bill Ritchie about it.
All right, and, and both of them are on the committee. Therese is the co-chair, so that's good. Okay, so we'll make note of that. All right, thank you all on the shelter. For the 40B projects, the residences at East Milton is apparently going to have a final public hearing tomorrow evening. So as everyone knows, the Select Board submitted written comments on the, to supporting the Ice House project. We actually went in and supported the Ice House with written comments and, and orally at the meeting, we spoke in favor of the project. 582 Blue Hill Avenue, that project was substantially redesigned, and we, Ms. Collins and I went to the meeting as authorized by this board over this last summer and offered comments about affordable housing generally and the need for affordable housing, and also some specific comments on the 582 Blue Hill Avenue project. So residences at East Milton is coming to a close. This project has not changed substantially. There's been some, fewer units. There's been somewhat, there's some changes, but it's not a wholesale redesign of the building or a major change. But the issue that I wanted to ask the board is, do we want to submit comments on this proposal? We obviously have a lot of residents who care about each of these proposals in their own neighborhoods. So the East Milton neighborhood is, is very concerned and has been very vocal at the meetings and participating through, through an attorney representing some of them and just residents making comments. So the timing is short. I only sent this around today, but the thought would be to, let's see what everyone thinks. The thought would be to submit our, our comment letter from July of 2020 to mass housing in connection with the project eligibility phase, because that talks about things like traffic and parking impacts. And also to submit through another exhibit, and what I did for Exhibit B was just to take Melinda Collins's very good comments and draft. And this was approved by the board from 582 Blue Hill Avenue. All I did was tweak it to make Housing Production Plan a defined term. In some places, I changed the word "we" to "the town" or to "Milton." And, but I essentially took this wholesale from Melinda's comments on 582 Blue Hill Avenue. There's, the Affordable Housing Trust unfortunately has not been able to have a meeting recently. We are going to try to meet next week jointly with the Housing Committee. But at some point, it would be nice if the Affordable Housing Trustees perhaps made these comments. Since that committee has not met recently, it might make sense, again, for the Select Board to raise the comments about the need for affordable housing in towns, that we're making project-specific comments and then general affordable housing comments. There's also this situation that has come up recently in the meetings that Abbey Park Restaurant, which uses the parking lot at Fort Franklin Street for nighttime parking, would lose those spaces. At the last Board of Appeals hearing, they indicated that that lease is only month-to-month for that parking lot. And this is something that the Planning Board would have to revisit, the special permit for Abbey Park. So there may have to be some other planning efforts undertaken by the Planning Board, the planning staff for the town. But this has come up as an issue with the 40B, although it's not a question of whether, it's not quite a local, the defined term, local concern, such as environmental issues or others that the 40B regs really apply to. So I put it out there as a question to the board. Do we wish to submit comments? And does any, if so, does anyone have any revisions to this letter? Would we want to just go ahead and submit this tomorrow so that we can be, I, I'm not able to attend the meeting. If anyone else can, they could certainly read our letter into the record, but we could just submit it in writing through Tim Zerwinski and have it included in the record.
I think that might be appropriate, Madam Chair, to do that. I, I have one question. I think I sent this to you today. So when, the one comment, I think it's in paragraph three, that refers to the 32 spaces that come under the special permit for the use of Fort Franklin by Abbey Park. It's actually about the town. So when you, in that comment, it says the town would have to look at this. We're referring to like the Planning Department trying to find another solution.
Yes. 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 Yeah, and I sent this over to Judy Barrett and to Tim Zerwinski to take a look at, and neither of them had any changes to make to it. And thought that, you know, for consistency's sake, it probably makes sense for the board to weigh in on this one, despite the fact there hasn't been substantial progress unlike the others.
If you like, Madam Chair, just for the purposes, I'll make a motion to forward that one to Chair. We want to set it to Chair on it, correct?
Yes, and to attach our electronic signatures, I think would should be part of the motion.
I'll second that, as is.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Or does anyone have any tweaks or changes, additions or deletions? Okay. And if not, I'll work with Lynn tomorrow and Tim to get this over to the Board of Appeals. So all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Myself, yes. 648 652 Canton is nearing the end. I don't know what the status of that is. I think it was a hearing either, it might have been one tonight, one of them was on tonight, one of them may have been last night. But that one is coming close to the end of its public comment period. So the board, they want to weigh in on that one. I'll, I will follow up with Tim Zerwinski to find out the status of Canton Avenue. The other three, 16 Amor, 936 Brush Hill, and 728 are just starting. 728 might actually be the one that's on this evening to open. So all three of those have just now either opened in the last couple of weeks or are opening this evening. And I want to weigh in on those as well, but that's just the status for the benefit of the public. Those hearings have now commenced. I have nothing further, just, let's go to members' reports next. Does anyone have a report? Mr. Doyle?
None here, Madam Chair.
Mr. Zulus? Ms. Collins?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Mr. Wells?
Just, I think everyone saw it tonight, it's a little bit of good news. I want to thank Allison Quinn and as far as most of the work she started, Tim Zerwinski as well, is that our dredging application has received a approval from the Review Committee, is going for approval by the Full Seaport Council. And that's really, really good news, and I can't thank the Landing Committee, Boston, Quincy, Time Barn, Mercoq, Frank Becker, so many people who partnered with us, as Ms. Collins has been for a couple of these. So we're getting, we're really getting calls here, so. And thank you, thank you, Ms. Collins and Madam Chair, because this all comes from the MPIC work in 2015.
Yeah, it's, I know, well, that's the thing, government takes a long time, we've found. But things move slowly, but that's great news. It's good to see that moving along. Hopefully, we'll get to the next level. And I talked to Tim this afternoon, and he sounded hopeful that we would. Okay, this is my fault. We have minutes on the agenda, and Lynn, I'm sorry, you asked for comments and I didn't get any to you. Could we defer these until Tuesday evening and put this on the agenda for Tuesday? Would everyone be okay with that, or? Okay. I thank you. A public comment response. I think we kind of addressed some of that during the discussion of the town administrator search process. Seeing none, future agenda dates, so we'll meet Tuesday evening, the 15th. Then the next meeting will be the 23rd of February, and our March dates are March 9th and March 23rd. We did try to solicit a date where we'd have a standalone night for the MBTA Community Zoning Presentation that Tim Zerwinski would like to do for us, is required to provide to us. With March 1st, which was a Tuesday evening, I think everyone, based on the emails that everyone responded to, that seemed to be a common date that would work for everyone, Tuesday, March 1st. So if that's still okay with everyone, we'll go ahead and schedule that. And we'd like to invite, I think the planning board would like to be invited, they've already had a presentation. But there are other committees and boards in town, and we should invite the general public to attend the Zoom. Such an important topic. It's like a freight train coming down the track set, all of the MBTA communities. So it's something we really need to get our arms around. Okay, community happenings, anyone? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Well, Madam Chair. Second, second.
All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, you did a good job, Mike. 10:44, you did a good job tonight. You know how you hate the late.
Oh, oh, well.
See?
I had a, I had a break.
Yeah, I saw.
I just need, I just need a break every, I just need a half hour every meeting and I can, I can handle it.
A power bar and a Gatorade?
All right, and myself, yes, so we are adjourned. And Mr. Denny, we're counting down. You only have two more of these, I think, to go, so.
I'll see you in the morning. 7:00 a.m., Mike.
All right, good night, everyone. Have a good night. Thank you, Milton.
Thanks, thank you, good night.
Thanks, Sean, we're adjourned.
Good night, Sean.